Speaker Pangolinan, if you can lead us in prayer.
Sidus maasi, Madam Speaker. Fanogifan zatafan manaitai. Ginani tatai lahiña danispiritu Santu. Zoustata. Innayao talu dangkulu nagroshia. Nasinya ha unna'iam. Kontinia unna'iam ifiatsa igwinaidza. Dan i hemplu. Ni taimanu para binkunduktham gwinai gipisun esti na legislatura. Para tutatsoowi monuna shneota. Para talamaosmaulik esti iislotta. Bendisiham zanna'iam imbabai korason momi zani hinassun momi. Zasinya inaksepta todui imashangan gwinai. Nada binaksepta loquai na todui mangagi gwinai. Pareo minalagu momi para umosmaulik iislotta zani nela'la taotauta. Maseyatiman parehu ipasu niparatafokat taparitae hemplu mo'na lo igwinaidza para itaotauta manparehu. Enau ingagago na kontinua munna'iam groshamo dan i bendishonmu. Ginani tatai lahiña danispiritu Santu, amen.
Thank you very much. Senator Tom Ada, can you please lead us in the end of phrasing?
I'm a star clue, I can't miss a call. Ima star clue, I'm the grandson. Then I'm a spigot, I'm a shniahoho. Who fashion maisejo para ra'iru kutei. To her defendi, ivenendi, iku'tura, ilingwa'i. I ai ri, ihanon, dan ikanu chamot. I eran shaku, iderzo, imasjoustata. Esti tu'apikme gihihu, ikihiha. Dan ibanderaho, ibandera ngohon.
I'd like to request if Senator Morrison can lead us in the singing of the Guam hymn in Chamorro. And Senator Duennias, the National Anthem.
(Singing) O, shikamo, oduhita noka. Antayana chunahanya, ishodu iluka. Ara'itona, para'itona. Napiva ishva senthara. Ara'itona, para'itona. Napiva ishva senthara. Oduhita, buipa, para'ita. Dan ina'ina, beni shon. Ontra'ki lihu, napasakula. Zuzto te'i islanwa. Ontra'ki lihu, napasakula. Zuzto te'i islanwa. You see, by the dawn's early light. Was so proud he hailed at the twilight's last gleam. Who touched and bright stars through the perilous night. For the rare hearts he walked were so gallant he screamed. And rock is straight there, the first year. It proved through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say the stars are thankful that her yet is. For the land of the free and the home of the brave.
Thank you very much. Can the clerk please take roll call? Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Uggins. Vice Speaker Cruz. Speaker Cruz. Senator Duennias. Senator Lim Tiahto. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Pangolinan. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Sinicles. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum. Thank you very much. Mr. Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I call for the approval of the Legislative Journal dated February 14, 2014, and have it subject to correction.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker and colleagues, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be penned into the session journal.
No objections, so ordered.
And there are messages from Imagalahin Guahan, and I move that they be penned into the session journal.
There are no objections, so ordered.
As well as reports of standing committees, Madam Speaker, I move that they be penned into the session journal.
There are no objections, so ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees, so under item 12 of this agenda, I move that bill numbers, Bill 277-32 be given its first reading.
There are no objections, so ordered.
I move that resolution numbers 321-32 LS to resolution number 324-32 LS also be given its first reading.
There are no objections, so ordered.
I move, Madam Speaker, that certificate number 107-32 LS be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
As well as certificate number 108-32 also be given its first reading.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, under motions, there's been a bill that's been introduced by Speaker Pangolinan, Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Tom Ada, and myself. It's bill number 278-32 COR. And it's an act to prioritize the funding of the classified and unclassified employees of the government of Guam by setting the salaries of Imagalahin Guahan, Isigundu na Magalahin Guahan, Senators of Ilastaturan Guahan, the Attorney General of Guam, the Public Auditor of Guam, and heads of the Departments and Agencies of the Executive Branch to October 1, 2013 salary rates. I wrote you a letter this afternoon, Madam Speaker, requesting the waiver of a public hearing pursuant to 2103A of Title II GCA, saying that this legislation is similar to a prior legislative measure that received a public hearing, and as such, I'm respectfully requesting that a waiver of a public hearing requirement be made pursuant to law.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispisho. And I am in receipt of your letter. And in response to your letters, I certify that Bill 278-32 COR meets the requirements set forth in 2103A of Title II Guam Code Annotated, and the requirement for such a public hearing is hereby waived.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Having granted that waiver, I then move that Bill 278-32 COR as introduced be placed in the second reading file.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And, Madam Speaker, I have no other motions at this time. Thank you.
So we are now in the second reading file. And Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized. On Bill 278-32.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 278 is fairly simple and straightforward with regards to the recent issue surrounding the issue of where we're going to go with regards to the implementation plan of the 2013 hay plan, basically, as submitted by the Governor. It is very clear that one issue of debate is whether there's enough money to implement the plan. And who shall be included in the plan, and how should the plan be administered? The Legislature set those issues to rest with the passage of Bill 268 and the requirements imposed on the Governor. Unfortunately, the Governor vetoed that bill and proceeded with the implementation as he sees fit. Some still contend contrary to statute and law and is without authority to do so. But one thing is very clear, I think, with regards to the issue of who should get these pay raises, at least in my mind and in the minds of many members of this body. Madam Speaker, I think that when we take a look at trying to bring the earning power of our classified and unclassified professionals within the government of Guam, it is very clear that there is across-the-board support. The Governor, the Legislature, and generally, I think the public feels that the pay of these, some of these positions, are not enough to attract the quality candidates that we have. I think they feel that when you say that a starting, a police officer would make $17,000 at entry, they know that we can't get quality police officers when that's the pay that starts. We lose them to the other branches of government that provide greater compensation for law enforcement. And so, in order to attract the service of these new police officers, we've got to increase the entry level pay, which is an adjustment of the pay scale itself. The problem that occurs, of course, is when you adjust the entry level pay, it creates what we call compression on pays above that, so that those that have been in years of service greater than starting become compressed and are now very close to the starting level entry pay. And so, that issue had to be resolved. And the way to do that, of course, is through the implementation of a slotting process through the Department of Administration. And it is only those issues that we really ask the Governor to send to the body, as was sent in the 2010. You know, we kind of keep going back, and they're saying, "Nobody asked any questions during the 2010 implementation of the pay," which is nothing could be further from the truth. And certainly, I dug up records from my office in which we sent numerous letters asking for that. The difference between what happened then, when we asked for that information, and what's happened today is, back then, they gave us that information. So we know where that person is in his current pay grade today, where he would fit in in the new pay grade at 2010. And so, that person has an opportunity to review that, contend whether or not it's fair to him, and has a process to appeal, to say, "I want a reexamination of my slotting based upon the years of service and the work that I do. You know, whether I get detailed to perform this work, I should be slotted at a different place and so forth." We got that information. This administration refuses to handle over that information. It just refuses to do so. It refuses to detail the cost of implementing this program and how it affects the different agencies, and so forth. When it finally decided to release the aggregate information, it released it not to the legislative body, but to the media. And what was even more troubling with the release of that information is that the plan that the Governor submitted, which should have included the, what he had said was 100% for attorneys, 100% for nurses, 100% for educators, and 50% for the general pay plan, 100% for the political appointee pay raises. And those were the Governor's plan as submitted. But when he came to implementing it and allocating the funds, he had zero money for the attorneys. He had zero money for the nurses at GMH. He had the educator pay at 50%, not 100%. So even he, in his implementation, is not following the plan he submitted, which brings greater question on, is he doing it according to the plan he submitted as required by statute? But what I wanted to do, Madam Speaker, and I've always said this from the very beginning, we wanted to take care of the professional staff, rank and file, within the classified and unclassified staff first. We gave the option to the Governor to either just do the classified or unclassified. He came back and he said he wanted to do both. We said, "Fine." But what has occurred, Madam Speaker, is he also included an executive pay plan and the rate of pay plan. And that was not part of the discussion in 2010. And so, what this bill does, Madam Speaker, is that it freezes the salary of, and sets it, of the directors and deputy directors and the elected officials back to October 1 of 2013. So that it's now, the elected officials and the directors and deputy directors will continue to receive the pay that they started receiving at 2013 going forward. What this does, of course, is it frees up, then, that money that would have gone to their paychecks to put back into the pool so that we can have greater ability to effectuate a greater implementation of the classifieds and unclassifieds. And Madam Speaker, I know times are hard for everybody. And I know that people are struggling. And even people making large amounts of money are struggling. But the people making the small amount of money are struggling harder and doing the work, Madam Speaker. And we need to compensate those individuals and raise those individuals at the bottom end. You know, a rising tide raises all ships. But it doesn't raise just the top of the ship. It has to raise the bottom as well. And what we're saying is, when the tide doesn't rise high enough, then we have to make at least sure that when the tide rises, that it raises the bottom, and the people at the top can wait. The people at the top who says, "I'm doing this for public service. The Governor asked me to leave a position in the private sector and help the people of Guam, and he's going to pay me well." It is. I mean, you know, we're talking about salaries of this director, Madam Speaker, in the neighborhood of the tens of thousands. The, I also, I passed out for the body's information the 2010 pay scale for these directors that will be getting a raise under the Governor's program. And those are the previous positions. But the difference is, Madam Speaker, is when you see this, so that the Director of Administration's current salary of 88 will rise to 91, that's what it was. We got that information from the administration. Right now, we don't know. We don't know if the Governor is going to do the same slotting for those positions. The Governor could just decide that the Director of Administration, because of her loyalty and how she toes the Administration's line, is not going to get the 91, but is going to get 99 instead, because that's permissible in the pay scale. We don't know that. But, so that's the difference in terms of how this process is moving forward. That information was presented to the people in Guam and the public and the Legislature upfront. We don't know any of that at this time. So that when the BBMR Director is, you know, good Democrat Mr. Reyes, is going to move from 88 to what? We don't know. And I know they're going to earn their money. But, Madam Speaker, we're not paying the rank and file staff at 100% of what they would be due. We're saying, "You only get to get 50." But the pay raised to these directors and political appointees are going to be at 100%. And I'm saying, "Let's make them wait." I'm not saying, "Let's not pay them." I'm saying, "Let's make them wait. Let's freeze their salary." When we go into the new budget cycle and we see that everybody is now up to the 100%, then maybe we can consider increasing those guys. But then this time, there's not enough money to give them 100% and give the rank and file 50. And there is not enough. Because even the Governor's allocation, cutting out the attorneys, doing the educator at 50%, cutting out the nurses, is going to cost $7.4 million. And so, any money saved on this would go then towards the implementation of the general pay plan and moving forward in that. So what this bill in Section 1 does is it sets those salaries for the Magalahi, the Senators, and the other elected officials, like the OPA and the Attorney General, to what they were making in October of 2013. And Section 2 then sets the salaries of those political appointees and directors for, also, back to 2013. So we're all in the same boat as leaders in terms of taking care of our people first, taking care of the lower echelon of our professionals in the government of Guam first, and then we'll wait for our do thing. The other thing that you have in Section 1, or I'm sorry, in Sec., the other issue in Section 3 then that is addressed, after we address the elected officials, the Governor, and so forth, is the compensation for the Senators. Trying to put to rest all this debate about compensation for the Senators. The Senators were never intended to be part of this hay plan. If you take a look at the budget that was passed and the allocation of the appropriation to the hay plan, there is no allocation for the Legislature. Because we never intended, and we never planned on giving a pay raise to the Senators. So there's zero allocation under the budget bill for an appropriation to the Legislature to raise senatorial salaries. Zero. None. We were not part of the discussion. We thought about it, and we decided consciously that we would not raise the salaries of Senators, and we wrote ourselves out of the hay study back when we passed 30068. Only the Governor decided to put it in here. And maybe it is, as one columnist had written, that the cover was trying to set a political trap, trying to enmesh us in the politics of pay raises for Senators when there was none at all, and that issue was never present in the appropriation and the allocation of money for senatorial pay raises. Never at all. And only the Governor put that in here to muddy the waters in terms of providing pay raises to his political directors and his political appointees. And so, this reaffirms what the salary of the Senators are. And it also removes us from what authority has expired, where everybody keeps saying, and you know, "I'm just as good a lawyer as my colleague who introduced the bill recently." We both never went to law school. So when we interpret the law, take it for what it is. There is, when he says, "We can raise our salaries, or we link ourselves to the judges," I say, I read it as, "The authority for the judge's pay to be raised has expired." They had a five-year authority, that they could raise it up. And so, therefore, we're not going to get a pay raise because the authority to raise the judicial salaries have expired. So I'm saying, there's no chance of doing that. Different sides of the same argument. So this then takes that out of the equation, and we are no longer tied to the judicial compensation at all as is current law. We're not subject to that law. We won't get a raise if they get a raise, in my opinion. And that's coming from the same law school that my good colleague attended. And so, Madam Speaker, it reaffirms what the salary is. And that's our current and present salary that we've been making and sets us back again to the October 1, 2013. I do want to make just a couple of minor amendments, Madam Speaker, and I think there has been passed out. In Section 2, if you'll see the third to the last line, it's located in Page 2 in the amendment. It's the third to the last line where we say, "Strike out executive pay plan in this section and just put Exhibit A." Because there, in Exhibit A, is the list of positions that are subject to the freeze and to the resetting back to October 1 of 2013. So I offer that amendment.
On the amendment, and if you're looking at your bill on Page 2, line 2, starting with the words, "The executive pay plan in this section," to delete those words and to add Exhibit A.
Correct.
There is an objection to the amendment to delete the executive pay plan in place of Exhibit A, so.
Madam Speaker, two of our colleagues are next door giving a resolution. I move for a recess so we can give them an opportunity to come in and vote.
Madam Speaker, if we're going to go into recess, I request we recess till 9:00 a.m. tomorrow. Being that you waived the public hearing, we should at least give the opportunity for some people to give whatever they hear, what they say on Bill.
The first motion to recess by the Majority Leader, we are going to recess. To Section 2, which is to delete on Page 2, line 2, lines 2 and 3, the words, "The executive pay plan in this section," and replace it to Exhibit A. And Exhibit is attached to your bill. And there is an objection, so I'm going to call for the vote then. So all those who are, or in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand, the Pangolinan amendment. Are you guys voting? Senator Munya Barnes, are you voting? And Senator Duennias, I mean Rodriguez? Sorry, Chris. On the amendment, Speaker Pangolinan amendment, all in favor then? The amendment, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So, Madam Speaker, what this does, again, is go back to, it's ensuring that we are clear with regards to the positions affected by the resetting of salaries to October 1 of 2013. And as I mentioned in the handout that I had, it showed where these salaries are going to go and the increases of these salaries, and that they are reset to October 13, and those salaries will not be in effect. Again, I want to point out, Madam Speaker, that the difference between the 2010, no matter what the Administration says, no matter how many press releases they put out, no matter what kind of smile they say when they tell a lie, it does not make it true. This body, myself personally, as a member of this body and as Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, asks the hard questions, the same questions I'm asking the Administration today with regards to the implementation program and the cost of that program. The difference is, when the Administration was asked and requested to provide information in 2010, the Administration, I don't want to say willingly, maybe they did it begrudgingly, but they responded and respected this body's requirement that we know the information necessary to make the best decision we can and to protect the rights of the employees that are affected by the decisions that we make. And so, they gave us the information. This Administration continues to this day to withhold and censor information regarding the implementation process and the questions that we have asked. They have not cooperated. They have not respected this body. And they withheld that information. And now what we're seeing is, in fact, what we have said will occur, which is that the employees affected by this plan do not know, and they deserve to know. And we're seeing that result today with regards to what has been able to move forward. So, again, I ask my body to ensure that we take care of the rank and file. We make them whole. We provide them with the compensation necessary for the job that they are doing today based on the evaluations that are done. And that there is a subject, an area that they can then look at and make that process, and know where they're going to go. And what we're doing with this bill is that we will reprioritize the money for the executive pay plan until we take care of those in the rank and file. And then maybe we can consider that at some future date. But I have no intention of ever introducing a bill to raise Senator salaries. Thank you.
Senator, before you sit, can you please make reference to the sheet that you were speaking to, the 2010 hay plan for our journal, the title of it?
I thought was the sheet with the table. And it says, "The 2000 pay plan, executive pay plan employees" that lists those slotting and steps for those positions in the executive paper.
Thank you. So on the motion, I have Senator McCready.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I haven't said anything about the hay plan. I've asked a few questions in the public hearing, two of them. And the answer that I keep getting back from Department of Administration is, "Allow us to handle this. Allow us to implement this because we can." The government, the Governor, the Administration has got this island in the right direction as far as physical responsibility. And of course, the Legislature has something to say about it, as rightfully they should. But who are we to tell someone or a different branch, or an agency, or a director that they don't deserve a little more money so they can take care of their families? Are we the only ones who have to take care of our families? Because we received a raise. Nobody stopped that. I mean, are we the only ones that are going to come here to fight for our pay? What about fighting for other people's pay? So are we going to attack Adaloo because we're partisan politicians? I have little tolerance for partisan politics. we're partisan politicians? I have little tolerance for partisan politics. All of a sudden, we've become human resource experts. I hear the former speaker, who I do have great respect for, I listened to him for a year and two months now, learn a lot. But he wants to help out the working class, the underpaid. I don't believe government creates jobs. I believe private sector creates jobs, but government creates better service. Hard working government officials get the job done, whether it's Atalou in a Republican administration or whether it's Atalou in a Democrat administration or it's a majority in the legislature, Democrats or Republican, who cares? The quality of life for the people of this island shouldn't be questioned by this body when a third party recommended that some of these positions need to be funded and funded a little better. I'd like to proffer an amendment, Madam Speaker, section one. Line four, I'd like to strike out the Attorney General and the Public Auditor of Guam. Madam Speaker, the Attorney General of Guam gets a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year. That's his base salary. We have lawyers in this office making more than the Attorney General of Guam, who sees hundreds and hundreds of cases each year. Is that fair? Are we undermining the Attorney General of Guam? And I'm surprised that the, the Oversight Chairman of the Attorney General would add him here. He knows the complexities of the Attorney General's law. He knows that crime, our dominant domestic problem in this island, is crime. And it's not getting better. It's getting worse. And it's not going to get better. It's going to get worse. So I'd like to strike out the Attorney General of Guam and the Public Auditor of Guam.
On the amendment, on page one, uh, lines four and five, to strike out the Attorney General of Guam and the Public Auditor of Guam. There's an objection, but, um, Senator Uggins, you'd like to speak?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm not going to stand and endorse the amendment or oppose it. I'm just going to stand in defense of our attorneys in this house. Madam Speaker, yes, we have the legislative legal counsel and we have a minority legislative legal counsel. They don't have the extended attaches and support to be able to get them to continuously provide the legal opinion that perhaps offices like, with all due respect, the Office of the Attorney General has a chief deputy attorney general, has other deputy attorney generals, and has a legal contingent of attorneys that do a fine job considering the circumstances. But I am not questioning that. I'm just coming to the defense of the legal councils who are part of this body, who do not necessarily have the full support or perhaps even three or four staff members, so that these individuals or another attorney, so that these individuals can provide reinforcement support. And for that, I recognize their compensation and perhaps why they're being compensated at the level they're, they're compensated at, but I also recognize that they do not have the full complement of team support that could reinforce the services that they provide. But they, both of them, I have to say, have done a fine job in the last year and two months. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On, on the amendment, Speaker Pangolin?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, what I'm trying to do is make sure that the attorneys who go to court, who prosecute these crimes, get their pay. Right now, those attorneys are not being funded and yet we're going to raise their boss's salary that the, that the Attorney Gen- The Attorney General is making a hundred and nine. He knew what the position was. He knew what he paid for. He said he wanted to serve the public. I think that he can serve the public at a hundred and nine thousand and wait for a pay raise until the attorneys under him that go to court, that prosecute the crimes, until we recruit more attorneys so that he can have an easier job managing the office, that he can wait a little bit longer because those guys are not going to get a pay raise. And we need to make those guys, get those guys who prosecute the crimes, get the pay raise. And when, when, when the, and I'm sure the Attorney General would say that, hey, it's like what the mayors would say, don't give me a pay raise, give my employees a pay raise. As a matter of fact, one mayor said, if you give me a pay raise, I want to be able to give my employees a pay raise. And we're going to see if they're going to do that. But I'm sure the Attorney General will say, what can make my job easier? And it's to recruit better attorneys by raising their pay scale, is to retain the attorneys that are there who have the experience by raising their pay scale. And once we do that, then maybe I'll think about getting a pay raise. I'm just saying that what this does is it freezes those salaries until we look at our financial situation, until we raise the people in the trenches, until we raise the guys at the bottom, until that tide rises high enough to ensure that we have the resources and the revenues to support paying all of our elected leaders. And that's what this bill does. And so that's why I object. I don't think it's unreasonable to say that when we're not giving those attorneys a pay because we're not funding them, that we're going to fund every other political appointee and elected official. I think we can wait. I think at a hundred and nine thousand, the Attorney General can wait eight months, the next term, whatever, in order to ensure that his office has the resources to make his job easier and to prosecute crime. You know, and they're saying, oh my God, you know, we're partisan politics. What the, partisan politics, somebody, my colleague said, that line about, oh my God, there's attorneys in this legislature came right out of the Atalou veto message. Is it? If that's not partisan politics, then I just think we're blind or deaf or we think the people of Guam are stupid because it's absolutely partisan politics to throw that in here that has no bearing on the discussion.
On the amendments, anyone else who'd like to speak? There being none, okay, Senator Uggins close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I just want to expand on some of the comments. My, my good, um, friend to my left here, Senator Uggins, said, I'm not questioning the capability of our legal counsel because they do do a wonderful job. This is just basically dollars and cents and we're looking at pure numbers here. And when we're looking at the Attorney General of Guam and the Office, Office of the Attorney General of Guam, who, by the way, have over two thousand criminal cases filed in, in this year alone, I think, or last year alone, I think it, it brings up, uh, some concern and, and conversation. So, uh, yeah, publicly, we do have fine and qualified lawyers who, who engross our bills, but two thousand criminal cases that we have to prosecute, I do believe, uh, should shed some light. So that, that's my amendment, uh, Madam Speaker, and I hope my colleagues, um, support it.
I have to apologize. And Senator, please, next time, raise your hand higher. Senator Munia Barnes, she wanted to speak on the motion. I will make that call to allow you then to speak on the amendment. I know I realized that I'm, and I, I was told by the clerk that she raised her hand and I didn't, that was an oversight on my part, so I am going to allow her to speak. Please proceed.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker, and I, and I, for the record, I, I did raise my hand and you looked right at me, but that's okay. That's okay. I'm as short as you, so our hands probably don't go high enough, so.
I'll catch you my, my stick.
Yeah, I'll borrow your hand next time. But I do, I do want to note for the, the record, uh, as we look at, at, at what's set and what the main, uh, objective of this, of this whole bill is, but more importantly, uh, the amendment that was objected to, every time I look at this paycheck that comes from the employees, and this is not the only one, uh, I got several of them, and I look at the increase at forty cents and hearing all the teachers out there saying, what you've done is an injustice for all the work that we've done, for all the teaching that we do. And I just want to say that all of this needs to be fixed. And in order for us to do that, we have to start here.
On the amendment to delete the Attorney General of Guam and the Public Auditor of Guam, all in favor, please raise your hand. All in favor of your amendment, yes.
You don't have a floor.
One, two, three, four, five. And the one that's missing out there, I'm sure would vote, it'd be six. Were you still, and I recognize these votes, I'm sorry, the amendment then failed. On the motion, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, um, aside from the fact that this bill was introduced at one thirty-two PM and we've had no recess to, 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 as my colleague to my right always uses the phrase, we have a cursory review of this bill. Um, it's trivial to me. We, we keep going down the same path over and over. We introduce a bill at one thirty-two and we call for session at one thirty and, and then this bill is heard. But, but at the same time, the author of this bill holds bills in his committee for four to six months that have, that have a lot of merit to them, you know? But when, when it's time for his bill.
I will call for a personal privilege.
Point or personal privilege, Madam Speaker.
I'm sorry, Senator. Yes, I understand, you're right. Senator, please, stick to the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As I said, we, we introduced this bill at one thirty-two and we, obviously, it's another surprise. And then when you look on exhibit A of this bill and you read section two, Imago lahein Guam's appointed cabinet members shall be set to their respective salary rates and blah, 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 et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This government is on the right track, Madam Speaker. And it's not because or solely because of this body. I will say time and time again that the legislature is not a broken branch of government. It works and it works much better when we work together. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. But this government isn't run efficiently and effectively just because of this branch. There's directors out there, there's cabinet members out there who run this government effectively without our help, day in and day out, wake up every morning, go to work. Do we punish them that for, for this? Do we punish somebody who goes off island to get educated, who stays on Guam to get a college degree from the University of Guam, who wants to better the island by joining into government service to improve the quality of life for the people of this island? Do we punish them that because we say, oh, they're not worth it? And then we lose them to the private sector? Is, is that the message that we want to send? That the legislature is going to stand in front of you, is stand in the way of you excelling as a government employee because we don't think you're worth it? Because we don't like this administration? Is, is that the message that we're going to send? Because that's the message that I'm getting. I see directors, I see how hard they work for the last year and two months. I see the ribbon cuttings, the dirt turnings, the lack of funding, the gap that they need to close. It's obvious. If we don't take care of these employees, somebody else will. And that somebody is a private sector job. Do we want a mass exodus of people leaving the government to go for the private sector or to go to greener pastures off island? Do we really want that? Or do we want our educated people to stay here to make the island a better place? Like I said before, we took a raise. This legislature took a raise. Nobody stood in front of them. We've come to work every day, fight for our pay. And now it's time to fight for someone else's pay. We have a problem with that. We have a problem, we have a personality problem with people in Atalou. Section two, I'd like to strike the entire section two. I'd like to proffer an amendment to strike the entire section two, Madam Speaker. And if, if anyone would like to object, which I'm sure it's going to happen, I invite them to go be a director. You know? I invite them to go to one of these agencies and, and work there for, we can see how they like it. See how hard it is. It's a tough job, I can only imagine. We sure have a lot to say about people in other agencies or other branches of government, when I think we should do a better job of just looking at ourselves in the mirror and doing a better job for us, rather worrying about what other people should or shouldn't be doing. So I'd like to strike section two, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment to delete section two, does anybody would like to speak on the amendment? Speaker Pangolin and Senators Nicklaus?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, once again, you know, we all have our own interpretation of what we're attempting to do here. What this bill does in section two is saying once again that we take care of the employees at the bottom. We take care of the employees making seventeen thousand dollars a year, who are struggling just as hard, if not harder, than directors making eighty-eight thousand dollars a year. We take care of the cop on the street that needs a pay raise, puts his life at risk every single day. We take care of the accountant who processes the direct for the check, the, the, who processes the check for the director at eighty-eight thousand, who's not, hasn't had a pay adjustment in ten years, twenty years, while the directors have enjoyed pay adjustments. I'm saying we got to focus and, and we've got to either be true public servants. All of these directors are saying, I'm here to serve the public. Well, I'm saying that so is the person doing the job so that you can look good. And don't you want to take care of him first before taking care of yourself? Don't you want to take care of the accountant, the environmental inspector? Don't you want to take care of the, uh, individual at Parks and Rec who cleans our parks first before you get a pay raise? Let's give him his entire pay adjustment that's due to him. Because we're saying, no. Those who are moving to delete this are saying, no, let's take care of the guys at the top first. Let's turn that ship upside down so when the rising tide rises, it rises the guys at the, who are at the top now first. But you know what happens? The boat will sink. If you turn it around and just take care of the guys at the top, if you turn that boat over and the tide comes, the boat's going to sink because water's going to empty. It is the guys at the bottom that hold this government together, not the guys at the top. And we're saying, oh my God, we're going to lose all of these directors to the private sector. I invite you, go down the list and see how many of these directors who came from the private sector got a pay raise to come to work for the government of Guam. They got a pay raise with very few exceptions. Everyone that's joined this administration got a pay raise. Some got a fifty, sixty, a hundred thousand dollar pay raise to come work for this government. They didn't get a cut. They didn't get a cut in pay from their private sector employment. So what I'm saying is that, at this time, in this moment, with the resources that we have, I think that those people that came to serve the governor, serve at the pleasure of the governor, serve his administration, serve his agenda, can wait to ensure that that agenda is carried out by taking care of the rank and file who will do things that is necessary to hold this government together. I realize the importance of leadership, Madam Speaker. And about going to be a director for a day? Madam Speaker, when I started my government career, twenty, twenty years ago, little, little over that, Madam Speaker, I went from making seventy-five thousand in base pay over to making twenty-five thousand. So I know what it's like to take a cut in pay. I took a cut in pay to come serve the people of Guam, and I haven't had a pay raise either, and I don't intend to take one. And when there was a proposal to raise the senatorial pay, again, you know, just naivete of, of not paying attention to what's happened, occurred in government, and just not even being here, you know, I voted no on the pay raises. So if he's going to make that charge, make it to somebody else, because it certainly ain't going to stick to me. Once again, Madam Speaker, what Section 2 does, is it says, "At this time, at this moment, when we are shortchanging the guys at the bottom, when we're not paying them a hundred percent of the pay adjustment that is called for in the pay because we don't have enough money," I say, "We don't have enough money to do a hundred percent for the guys at the top." And let's, let's ask them to make that sacrifice, to serve that public as they said that they wanted to do. And let's put that resource to those of the guys at the bottom and have them get their hundred percent pay adjustment as called for in the hay plan, rather than taking it from them to give to the guys at the top. Because that's exactly what this amendment will do. It'll take the pay raise, the pay adjustment that we owe the people at the top, where we can give them more, and we're going to take that, take it out of their pockets, take that twenty cents, take that thirty dollars, take that, that ten dollars a pay period, we're going to take that away and put it to the guys at the top. We're not going to increase that at all, because we think those guys at the top are more important. I don't think so. And I'm not saying that they don't deserve it. I'm saying, at this moment, with the resources we have, let's do right by our rank and file first, and then we can take advantage of all of the improvements and the miracles that are occurring in this government that says we can do all this. And then we can give the guys at the top. When we have seen that, in fact, we are going to be able to sustain this pay increase and bring them up to a hundred, when in fact we see we can do that, then, then we'll reward the guys at the top. But at this time, the pay that we're giving to the employees is not a reward. The pay that we are going to increase for the directors is a reward. But I say, the pay that these public employees in the professional ranks, serving the people of Guam, in the classified and unclassified, who are being denied a hundred percent by this administration because we don't have enough money, but we have enough money to reward the guys at the top. I say, let's flip that. Let us take care of the guys at the bottom that every single day also come to work at, at much, much less pay than the eighty-eight thousand and the ninety thousands and the seventy thousands the directors are earning, and just have those guys sacrifice for a little while longer until we make those guys whole in paying them the job, in paying them what the job that they're doing is worth, as outlined in the hay plan. And let's not shortchange them, let's not cheat them, let's not take the pay out of their pocket to reward the guys at the top, and, and that's all it does. And this amendment does nothing but flip this thing on its head, and I don't agree with that at this time.
Senator Sniklers, you're recognized.
So much misdirection, confusion, distraction. When I came into office, Madam Speaker, the salary on day one is exactly the same for me as it is today. I never got a raise. Yet there's constant reference to things that have happened in the past in order to justify what we're going to do in the future. Are we here to move this island forward? Or are we here to use things that happened in the past to justify why we want to do what we want to do today? Surely, Madam Speaker, we should have a commitment to the future by doing what's responsible today. And this bill, in total, is just one small step in trying to re, readdress this entire situation that has created near chaos throughout our government, and a deep sense of dissatisfaction and low morale, not only with our rank-and-file government of Guam employees, but in the private sector, in the general community, and everybody else who's stepping back and looking at this thing and saying, "What on earth is going on here?" This amendment, Madam Speaker, is intended to make sure that the directors and deputy directors of this administration get raises. That's what Senator McFriedy is trying to do with his amendment. I have nothing against the administration. I certainly don't have a personality problem. But I do question priorities, and I will question them always, Madam Speaker. Priorities with respect to how we manage the people's money, priorities with respect to how we treat our employees fairly, and whether or not our government really is going gangbusters and doing the right things as suggested by the retiring speaker. With the exception of tax refunds, Madam Speaker, which I would like to remind the proffer of the amendment is something that the body had to fight for, tax refunds in the budget back in October, the governor kept wanting to lower the amount down to a hundred and ninety million.
Madam Speaker, can we stick to the motion, please, the amendment?
This, Madam Speaker, this is on the amendment.
This is, here you go.
Absolutely, Madam Speaker. This has to do with managing the people's money.
Because it talks about the directors.
Managing the people's money with respect to how it's going to be impacting salaries and how we need to prioritize the people's money in the right areas. And that is one of those areas.
Point of information, Madam Speaker, Governor Collins paying the tax refunds, I think we can move to the West Germaine for the bill.
Senator...
Well, unless he's going to pay tax refunds, let him...
I'm ruling you out of order. You're not recognized to speak on anything that, unless you're pointing out a point of order, and you're, so you're out of order.
It's not Germaine to the bill.
Senator, you are out of order. Please proceed.
And this is exactly why, Madam Speaker, we earn our pay. Because speaking the truth is a very difficult thing to do. Oftentimes, you're going to get sideswiped and challenged. But the truth is, in the budget in October, the governor only wanted to set aside a hundred and nine million for tax refunds, and we had to fight to bring that number up to a hundred and twenty million to make sure the people's refunds get paid. We were the ones in this body that had to fight for that. The governor goes out and cuts the checks, he just so happens to cut them at all the right times, when everything's going wrong, he drops another ten million out there to try and, again, confuse, misdirect. But we must stand firm, Madam Speaker, when it comes to the people's money. And with respect to this amendment, increasing director salaries at this time is not something that we should be considering when our rank-and-file employees are getting forty cent checks, thirty-dollar checks. How can we justify a ten thousand dollar, twenty thousand dollar raise for somebody who's already making eighty, ninety, a hundred thousand, when somebody who's making thirty, forty, fifty is getting forty cents? How can we stand up here and tell our people that we're taking our government in the right direction, everything's going smoothly? How can we do that? And then say, "Other people are the ones who have a problem." We were invited in the proffer of the amendment to say, "Go and be a director." Boy, Madam Speaker, would I love to. I would love to have the opportunity to go and be a director. First and foremost, those two-hundred-and-eighty-four businesses that did not pay their taxes but got their business licenses renewed, they are getting away with not paying the people's money. As a director, absolutely, I would go after those people. Over the last ten years, Madam Speaker, we have not had a single case filed for fraud in tax evasion in this government, Madam Speaker. And it wasn't until we did our hard work here and called that out in public hearings, we finally have three cases. We have baked tens of millions of dollars every year in taxes, the people's money. We have three cases now. We had none before we started doing our job and questioning those things. The very same job of calling up these things and questioning them, and then getting sideswiped and being told to try and, "Sit down and be quiet." Madam Speaker, this is the people's money. There needs to be equity in this government. There are employees who are not being treated properly on many fronts, more of which I've talked about in the main motion. But with respect to this amendment, it adds insult to injury to our employees who are getting those miniscule checks, and we're trying to say that these directors deserve these ten, twenty thousand dollar raises, when we have these businesses who aren't paying their taxes and allowed to get away with it. When we ask for information how this pay study is going to impact employees, and we get a belligerent response of thirty thousand pages of paper that are not even relevant to how employees are getting slotted, I mean, I could really stand up here, Madam Speaker, and use up a lot of time going down the list here. But in the end, in the end, we don't need to be combative, we just need to be honest. And the honest truth is, raises for directors need to wait so that we can properly pay our rank-and-file employees. And that's why I stand in objection to this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Rispichu and then Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in objection to this amendment as well. And I also served as a director of the, of a department, namely, the Department of Youth Affairs. And Madam Speaker and colleagues, I, I cherished every minute that I spent being able to work with the rank-and-file classified and unclassified employees at that department. And what an experience that I, that I had, and I will keep with me forever. As a matter of fact, I joked that if there was ever an opportunity to be director of that agency again, I certainly would want that. Madam Speaker, I, I want to rise to support the comments of the previous speaker and certainly express how this whole hay study implementation has certainly frustrated each of us, no matter what side of the issue you stood. But the mover of the amendment and the objections to Bill 278 only make it more clear, Madam Speaker, that this new direction that we're fighting for is a direction for political patronage. When we stand here in the floor and say that we have to respect the rights of those directors and deputy directors, that they have to go to work every day, they work hard and they earn a salary, why aren't we doing the same for the rank-and-file employees who, when they received the implementation of this hay, we saw through the vice speaker's effort a check that was cut for forty cents? We saw through some other people's courage in coming forward that they received a check for two dollars in some sense, one for six dollars, and these are also teachers, Madam Speaker. Why aren't we fighting for teachers so that they can, they can get a better salary in terms of this hay implementation? But even at that, to, to want to say that, that we need to focus on, on the directors and the deputy directors, and we, we need to fight for their pay because we got a raise? In the twenty-seventh Guam Legislature, Madam Speaker, I believe there was only, it was Speaker Ben, Senator Tina, Senator Uggan, Frank Uggan, and myself, we took a one-thousand-one-hundred-dollar-a-month cut for nine months. No one's ever talking about that. All they're talking about is that senators somehow received this pay raise. At the time when we had to take this pay cut, we were the only public servants, the only elected officials that took this one-thousand-one-hundred-dollar-a-month cut for nine months, Madam Speaker, because we wanted to join the rank-and-file governor Guam employees when they were reduced to a thirty-two-hour work week. Are we going to just conveniently say that as those employees were restored back to a forty-hour work week, that senators should not have been restored to the salaries that we were restored to at the time? And we were, because that sunsetted. But what also transpired is that the mechanism in which senators are paid is tied to the salaries of the presiding judge in the case of the speaker, and in the judge of the Superior Court for the cases, in the case of senators. That's what the law is. So now some, some, someone argues that we have to deal away with that mechanism because indirectly, we wanted to have our raises, our own salaries raised at the same time the hay study was implemented. Whereas, you know, we took that position that that, that, that authorization to raise the salaries of the justices and the judges of the Supreme Court of Guam, it sunsetted. And so yet, we're still having to deal with all this noise and all these distortions and all these distractions that senators somehow are going to get a huge pay raise at the same time the hay study is implemented. And so what the mover of the amendment is trying to do is say, you know, let's just confirm what the fight was all, all about. And if some want to make it a partisan issue, I'll accept that. If it, if it's going to be a partisan issue, that one party is going to stand up for the rank-and-file employees, then certainly let it be known that it's the Democratic Party. If you want to make the argument, colleagues, that this is all about partisan politics. And if you want to make it a partisan issue, that one party in the legislature wants to stand up for the pay raises for the, the political patronage, then certainly that's the Republican Party of Guam that's fighting for the high salaries for the directors and the deputy directors and those agency heads. Madam Speaker, we, we all understand the nature of our work here in the legislature, and certainly we know that we can keep passing bills along party line. If it's vetoed, then we certainly know that we need at least ten votes to get that thing overridden. But what we have here by way of Bill 278 is to reaffirm that the priority in funding shall go to the classified and unclassified employees of this government of Guam, and to make it also clear that the governor, the lieutenant governor, the senators of the legislature, the AG and the public auditor, and the heads of the departments and agencies of the executive branch shall not get any of these raises. And so when we're trying to make that clear, we, again, are bombarded with opposition with an amendment that says, "Oh, no, no, don't touch the agency heads." There was an earlier amendment that said, "Don't cut the attorney general because he works really hard, he has a lot of cases." And then there's also the same admission that crime is on an increase. So if we want to address what those problems are, which we know what they are, then let's support the rank-and-file employees. When I was a director of an agency, Madam Speaker, I certainly devoted all of my time and attention to the rank-and-file employees, trying to make them whole because of what happened to them over the years. And I certainly knew that my role there was temporary. So now we have an administration who has an elitist attitude, that they're entitled to that job because, what, they have, they have all the experiences? I submit to you, Madam Speaker, that if any agency director wants to walk off the, out of this job or her job because they don't, are not, they're not happy with the salaries they're making today prior to the implementation of this thing, then let them leave. I submit to you that you can probably get the highest-ranking classified employee throughout this government to run those agencies, and they'll do a better job than they would if they were empowered. But they're not empowered right now. There's a climate of fear throughout this government, they're afraid to speak up. And so for those classified and unclassified rank-and-file employees that are listening to this legislative session, I hope that they're understanding what this partisan fight is about, and I hope they understand which side is fighting for them and which side is fighting for the political patronage. Madam Speaker, Bill 278 simply bifurcates the issue and says, "Let's focus on those who really are deserving of this salary increase that the classified and unclassifieds have to get it, and we prioritize funding for that." And if any one senator wants to take up the charge... And if any one senator wants to take up the charge to get a pay raise for the governor, the lieutenant governor, if you want to take up the charge to get a pay raise for the attorney general or the public auditor or, or these agency heads, then you could do that by way of a standalone bill. But stop using the rank and file employees to get pay raises for these political patronage. And that's what's being made clear over and over as we continue to deliberate this discussion in session where we're not bombarded with press releases that say everything is okay. Tonight, we're gonna be treated to a, a speech where we're gonna hear probably that everything is okay. How can everything be okay, Madam Speaker, when, when you talk to the rank and file Gov Guam workers, they're not getting the resources that they need? Their overtime for GPD, for the police officers are not being paid. Trash is not being picked up. Fenders aren't being paid. And so I rise in opposition to the amendment. As the author of this bill said, it'll just flip this bill upside its head and it will not, it will not continue on this course that we had when we decided through the efforts of the retiring speaker, Senator Sniklas, to introduce Bill 268 so that we can bifurcate the issue and focus on who really at this point in time should be getting these pay adjustments. And we've always maintained, at least our side of this House have always maintained that it should go to those rank and file classified and unclassified employees. And so I oppose the amendment. And, and if the mover of the amendment wants to fight separately for pay raises for these agency heads, then I think that should be a standalone issue so that they're not gonna use the, the hard work of the rank and file employees to really fight for their own pay raises, which is what they wanted to do from the very beginning. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, I have Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm not confused. I'm, I don't have any distortions. All along, I've understood that the hay plan was really an effort to address human capital, to address workforce development. I understand in 2010, an executive order was proffered by the governor at that time. And the legislature supported it, and then there was this halt to it because of finances. I truly understand how human capital really makes a difference in an agency. And then collectively, all the agencies make a difference in, in government, just like in a school. I understand how that school leader makes a difference and how he or she supports all the individual teachers, the custodians, the counselors, the health counselors, everybody there and the families. Leadership just simply makes a difference. That's all there is to it. It, it just really makes a difference. Got a good leader, then you've got the rank and file just zipping and doing and succeeding and achieving. You have a lousy leader, a quote-unquote leader, everybody else kind of just signs in, does what they can, signs out. And we were there when the hay plan was first, I think it was in the nineties. I remember all the tedious procedures, processes at that time. And I know that the hay plan is something that's done by human resource experts. They're regionally, or they're internationally and internationally known, decades of experience. And I know they came to Guam since the nineties and have been working on this, and I know that they have continued to update. And so I know that this whole phase into fifty percent so that we can address the rank and file and that we can also address the leadership. I hold leadership fully responsible for what happens or doesn't happen. And it's no secret, there are some agencies right now that I just have real huge problems with. And I've asked oversight chairs, can you like bring them in? Can we talk to these people about how they're earning their money, how they're addressing their mission, how their vision isn't being realized? And some oversights are happening, and I'm very happy about that because for me, even though we're policy, we have oversight, we can say, this is the way you should have been spending your money. So it is about moving forward. It is about people earning their money. It is about opportunity. It is about retaining and recruiting those who have leadership competencies to pull an organization together, to, to realize their resources and to achieve their mission. Being a leader, particularly in today, is no easy task. It is something that comes with experience. It is something that comes with continuous training. And so for me, this hay plan, the way it's phased in, fifty percent for our, our rank and file, and then retention effort for those in leadership positions, for me is just sensible. It just is. Now, I don't have a breakdown on current directors, those who left private and have joined government. But I would say this about public servants. It really takes a certain type of person to want to be a public servant, number one. And as I've been a public servant all my professional life, I get that. I've been a teacher all my life, as you have. And as I've never, I've never joined the rank of being a teacher for money, because you know, we don't get it there, I also suggest that the value, that teachers do deserve pay once they perform. And as it's been stated a couple of times today, you know, I am sure you have, have been connected with, have connected with the Department of Education and all the teachers did get raises. Nobody got a pay demotion. Nobody got a pay cut. Now, the pay raises were determined by hay plan or human resource professionals. And your seniority does make a difference in how much. And we know that if you're senior, you've already earned this much and you're gonna slot over to the next pay grade and the steps. We've done this enough in our professional life to understand that. What I am standing for, Madam Speaker, for me, it's not a partisan issue. It's a human capital issue. It's human development in the workforce. It's how do we recruit and retain government servants, public servants, so that they can proceed and nurture what needs to happen in all of these agencies? People who are directors and deputy directors are deserving. They just simply are. Degreed, continuous service. There's value in what they do. And I suggest they should be paid accordingly. We phase it in, fifty percent now, and then when, when there's more money, another fifty percent. But this was done by human resource experts. It's an overlaw look. Are there questions? Yes, there are. Can the working relationship get better? It seems like it can be. Have some people gotten information? It sounds like they have. But from where I stand, I'm not confused and I'm not distracted. The hay plan and this whole notion of energizing the human capital throughout our agencies is really what we're trying to do. And so, Madam Speaker, the last time we were in here for this, I didn't stand and say anything. But today, I, I just really needed it to be known that this is the way I see it. They do earn their money. The government's on opportunity to try to set straight some of the, the pay and performance issues, phase it in, and, and we move forward. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, just a point of information, just to be correct and accurate. The pay for the executive plan is a hundred percent. It's not phased in. The pay for the general pay plan is phased in at fifty percent. So the statement that was made that it's phased in for the executive pay plan is not correct.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion, I have Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, hello. And, well, yes, I, yes, and that's, um, not, um, not the main motion. I have Senator Morrison on the main motion, so that's still in the side. I'm still working on the amendment. I have Senator Uggan and then Senator Munybar.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And when I start this, but I'll go and told you, many little, 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 little Gahan. Madam Speaker, anyway, I understand, Steve, you know, I look at this and with all due respect to the mover of the amendment. There's a term that was applied or has been applied repeatedly over the course of my adult life, and that is lead by example. But Madam Speaker, I say that because not too long ago, I received a copy of a check as a result of the implementation of the competitive wage plan for an employee within an agency, forty cents. That director, based on the information that I have before me, and if it's consistent with the implementation of the 2014 competitive wage plan, would get twenty-five thousand dollar adjustment. Lead by example, Madam Speaker. And what my endorsement for this legislation is first and foremost, let's take care of our employees, our classified and unclassified employees, before we start addressing the executive compensation. And I say that and I commend the Pacific Daily News because they did a fine job in highlighting some of the challenges that have been identified in the implementation of the plan. Madam Speaker, eight hundred and seventy employees received less than thirty dollars. Forty-one received above three hundred dollars. And there are a lot of concerns that are expressed about whether, in fact, this is a competitive wage compensation plan. And I'm no expert, Madam Speaker, and yes, the hay plan group, they'd come in and provide their evaluation and their assessment. But one com, one question I had repeatedly asked during the course of the budget or the oversight hearing, the informational briefing, was how is this hay plan gonna be implemented? I was told that absolutely everyone would get a pay raise and no one would get a pay reduction. So based on that, based on the assurances that we received, certainly I went off of the information that was provided during that discussion. But Madam Speaker, to me, let's set aside, at least at this point in time, the executive compensation. Let's take care of our regular employees, classified and unclassified. After we're done dressing, addressing their compensation, obviously not everyone's gonna be happy based on the merit performance evaluation. But let's take care of them first. Give them the assurance that their leaders are making sure that they come at the forefront so that they can provide, continue to provide the services and in this case, the education that they provide. Because our teachers, of which eight, eight hundred and seventy employees get less than thirty dollars, to me, I don't consider that as, as a justified compensation. But I qualify that statement again. I am not a human resource expert. But I anticipate, or I expect that perhaps there's some discrepancy in terms of this compensation scale. Let me transition over to the executives. Madam Speaker, much of the comments here that have been relayed is absolutely correct. We need to invest in our people. We need to, the comment, one of the comments that I heard this morning was, is we need to recruit the best of the best so that they can enter public service arena and provide their service directly to our community of Guam. Absolutely. I believe that if we need to adjust compensation, then certainly we need to consider that as part of the overall equation. But lead by example. At this time, let's take care of our ordinary, our regular employees, our rank and file employees, classified and unclassified, before we take care of the executives. You know, Madam Speaker, I applaud the chief executive because we've been in session on perhaps two or three separate occasions because of this issue and the implementation of the hay plan. And we were made, or at least I was made to understand that every single employee is gonna receive a pay adjustment. But some of the information that has been released, Madam Speaker, doesn't reflect that. Some of the information, if you call a twenty cent pay raise an adjustment, then, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to disagree with you. If you call a forty cent pay raise as an adjustment, I'm gonna have to disagree with you because that's not gonna affect the quality of life of our public employees. But I still have to come back to respecting the human resources expert that provided their assessment. One comment again that was made during the oversight hearing was that everyone would get an adjustment. And that's what my anticipation was, Madam Speaker, that everyone would possibly get a step up. And guess what? That, that may equate to anywhere from nineteen hundred dollars a year up to perhaps whatever their equivalent step compensation is. That was my understanding. That's why, Madam Speaker, in this particular case, with all of these discrepancies, let's take care of the rank and file, rank and file employees. Let's take care of them first. Let's remind our employees in the government of Guam that they're gonna be addressed, their compensation, whether it's through their appeals process or through a reevaluation of their compensation pay, that they are gonna be taken care of first before we address the executives within our government. And you know, Madam Speaker, a statement was made about, a little earlier about, I challenge some of our colleagues to serve in that capacity. I can identify perhaps a minimum of three or four in this halls that have experienced And not to exclude myself. But you know, Madam Speaker, it goes back again to lead by example. This legislation, my understanding of it is obviously it's gonna extract the executive pay, all-inclusive, but it's gonna make sure that in fact on the sideline, that our regular employees in the government of Guam is gonna be taken care of. And then perhaps this can be revisited and can be considered at a later date. And I'm keeping my options open, Madam Speaker, because I believe sincerely that if the competitive wage in the private sector is gonna pull many of our people's resources or keep our people's resources who come into the, who return to the island after they acquire their education, they acquire some experience and they resort to the private sector, which is a wonderful way to contribute back to our community. But eventually, we want to attract some of our very good managers and executives so that they can lead our government agencies. And perhaps eventually sit in one of the seats that we presently occupy. So I support the contention that eventually some of these compensation provisions have to be considered. But what had been done in the past is obviously was considered on a case-by-case basis. Here, we had an evaluation. Madam Speaker, just looking at the, the pay adjustment, some of the positions, I, I would say, based on the responsibilities, absolutely merit a pay increase. Absolutely. But it goes back again to that phrase that was mentioned a little earlier, lead by example. Let's take care of our regular employees. Let's take care of our classified, our unclassified, and then providing, provide it some additional information about affordability and sustainability is provided so that we can go back to the people of Guam and say, yes, we can absorb this as an additional continuous cost of operations of our government of Guam. I wanna just close, Madam Speaker, by, you know, saying that this is, I don't consider this a slight to any of the executives. And perhaps some of them may see it differently. I really don't consider it a slight to any of the executives. Because I would think that eventually we would come back to this legislature. Eventually, we will take a look at some of these provisions and some of these compensations and say, guess what? It was recommended that your salary be adjusted accordingly. And we're seeing the resources come in. And then by all means, we may revisit this pay structure. But Madam Speaker, let's take care of our teachers, highlighted in our front page. Let's take care of our people's resources and throughout the government of Guam. And then perhaps providing information of sustainability and affordability, then perhaps we can come back to this body and consider some of the other executive positions. So, Madam Speaker, I, I stand, obviously raising those concerns with regards to the deletion, the motion to delete, section two. But I thank, I guess, our executives. the motion to delete, Section Two, but I thank, I guess, our executives for serving our community. But certainly, we anticipate, at least I anticipate, that we may come back and revisit[607.22]
The Senator, why don't I just give you my paycheck to show you what an insult this is? After all the years I've worked in government Guam, lost them all, I might as well retire. But I really love my job. I want to tell them, because I know they're listening today, that we are leading by example. We want to make the difference. We want to make sure that before we think about giving ourselves any kind of adjustment, that we look at our employees first and we make sure that all of them are done correctly and that everybody's happy and that everybody's quality of life, who provides a mission mandate to the people of Guam, that they're going to, that we're going to do right by them. So Madam Speaker, I know that objection was on hand and I'm going to have to support the objection because there's something even bigger that we need to contend with. And I don't know if this was sent out to the people, but we really got to look at what was, at what information was provided to us from the judiciary as their, as their answer to wanting to make sure that before they do anything, they're going to suspend it until they look and make sure that everything is in order, that everything is legally done, that everything, I guess all the i's are dotted and the t's crossed. So Madam, thank you Madam Speaker for giving me the opportunity to speak, but I just want to say for the record again that I don't oppose giving this hay plan to the government employees, the government of Guam employees who deserve it. And I think they're all deserving, but I want to make sure that we do it and we do it right. And if there's any hiccups and any, and anything that's wrong, then we show as leaders that nothing, we don't get anything until everything is taken care of. Sign them off, Madam Speaker.
Welcome Senator.
Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Duanias.
I have, yeah.
On the amendment rather than...
I'm just going to make two points. I got, I got fact checks on the main motion, but first of all, the mentioned document here on our desk from the judiciary does not say confidential. It was not delivered in an envelope or anything, so just making, just making that point.
Senator, that has, that's not part of the discussion.
Sure, but other point of information before we vote because, on this objection, just to, just to put this to the body, the information was provided by BBMR that it was an entry error on the executive employees at 100%, that it's 50% by their calculations and what the intention was and it will be corrected in the subsequent pay period, so.
Senator, that is not even part of the discussion at all. And as a matter of fact, yes, that document should not even be circulated, so therefore...
It was referenced on the floor, Madam Speaker, so I was making the point very clear.
But it's not, but it's not part of the discussion.
I understand, but it was part of the discussion as represented by a member on the floor.
No one has entered it as part of the discussion and that, if you heard me earlier, I had asked Speaker Panglinen when he made reference to the hay plan itself, that chart, I asked him to make sure that when he's making reference to that, that he then actually identifies the document to be part of the journal. That was the only one that I've recognized to be part of the journal.
Madam Speaker, if you were following, if you were following the retiring speaker, she mentioned the document and she mentioned that it was a confidential document. So I'm just saying, for the purposes of the public consumption in this body, confidential documents should be placed on our desks and have confidential written on it or be in a sealed envelope. That's the only point I'm making, Madam Speaker.
Point of, a point of information, Madam Speaker.
Please make your point.
Permission was asked from the judiciary. They said it was a public document, it was released, and I asked if I could make copies so that my colleagues can see it because this is new information and I know that legal counsel both had a time to at least briefly look it over. And I just want to say that permission was given and I'm just saying, based on the information received, that we really, as policymakers, need to look at it.
But I think the Senator is bringing the point up in terms of it being mentioned as confidential and it's not confidential at that matter. Senator Uggan, is there, do you have a point?
Just a point of information, please, Madam Speaker, if I may.
Please make your point.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. During the course of the judicial, judiciary or judicial council meeting this afternoon at 12, 12 noon, this particular document was presented and discussed. I need to qualify, just for the record, because it's been referenced, Madam Speaker, that this is not the position of the judicial council, but it is a position or the opinion of the staff attorney to the acting administrator of the courts. So, and that was, that was clearly made by the Chief Justice in terms of recognizing the, the document that was presented. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So Madam Speaker, for the record, in this session, this should not be considered then a confidential document as placed on our desks.
I understand. So on the amendment to delete section two, Senator Duaneas, are you speaking on that?
No.
Okay. So then, on the main, is there anybody else who would like to speak on the amendment to delete section two? Okay. Now, then, so we're going to take a vote on the amendment. There's apparent opposition to the deletion of section two of the bill. So, all in favor of deleting section two? Senators, all in favor of deleting section two? Please raise your hand, one, two, three, four, five.
Coming with a voice.
I'm always, I'm always including you guys in your vote, yes, all right, but the amendment to delete fails. So, and I have the Senator on the main motion, is there anybody, are you complete in terms of your discussion?
I'm still going.
Okay.
Thank you.
So Senator Morrison, I mean Senator McCreary is still on the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't mind being called Senator Morrison.
It's a name.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. He's better looking. Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I've, I've stood here for a year and two months and I've listened to, to everything that this legislature has to say and we work hard and, and I thank my colleagues for their hard work and commitment. I've heard some, some, some comments by the previous speakers to some of my amendments, you know, and I was hoping some of these amendments passed. I was hoping that this legislature could see that we had to take care of other people as far as when it came to pay. We had to help other people, uh, take care of their families as we do, as we did, you know, and, and that didn't happen. I've heard, I've heard from previous speakers, if they don't like it, let them go. That's not leadership. That's not integrity in your intent is to let people go. Just go ahead and go if you don't like it. No, we need to build morale, momentum. We need to make these guys feel like they're wanted. Uh, we, we can't punish people for being a government employee, you know, so, so I disagree with some of those statements. I also heard that, um, that, um, they knew what their salary was before they entered public office. And, and to the teachers out there, everybody knows, we have the greatest respect for our teachers because they shaped the future of this island. And, and for, for yourself, Madam Speaker, for, for Dr. Ilina Maschida, I see it. I see your guys' leadership. I see your guys' passion for, for the, the second and third and fourth generation and I thank you for that because we need that. It's not something that we can just take lightly and, and hope someone else does that. But you guys do that and I thank you.
That language should be corrected because that's a note that I have sent to her to make it clear that elected officials knew when they salaried her, when they ran for the position.
Elected officials.
Not any classified employees.
Directors. Okay, so, so thank you for making that clarification. Madam Speaker, I look at section number three. And, and I hear the, the author of this bill continuing to say that I was the only one who didn't vote for a pay raise back in 2010. Continue. He said it last year, he said it this year, and he keeps saying it. I'm the only one who didn't vote for a pay raise and I commend him for that. I, I really do. I think the integrity of that intent was well intended. But when you vote for something that you know is going to pass, you get implementation anyway. I'm not sure, and I commend him even further if he does.
Again, Miss Madam Speaker, point of privilege, can the author please stick to the issue and not talk about what my motivations are?
This is part of my amendment, Madam Speaker. This is part of my amendment.
But you are impeaching my motivation, Senator.
I am not impeaching.
Yes, you are, Senator.
I am proffering an amendment.
Senators, please, it's a personal privilege because you're addressing the Senator.
Madam Speaker.
You weren't being generous, are you? What you should be doing?
Madam Speaker, I'm trying to proffer an amendment. I'm trying, I'm trying to proffer an amendment.
Senators, please address the chair.
Would you like me to, would this gentleman like me to bring that in?
I, I understand your point, so Senator, please stick to the amendment that you want to proffer.
I'm speaking, I, I, I'm trying to, to proffer an amendment, Madam Speaker. The legislature, Madam Speaker, makes $60,840 a year, this body. The author of this bill didn't vote for that $60,000, $60,840 raise. So I, I, I'm hoping that I get his support for my next amendment. Because if he was true in his intent, then he will support this amendment. We keep talking about how we have to take care of others before we took care of ourselves, but, because we've already taken care of ourselves. That's the truth. We've taken care of ourselves. I'm not undermining the work of this body. Because we work hard. And I, like, like I said earlier, and I think this statement, uh, deserves repeat, is we work a lot better when we work together. And that always is not going to happen. I might have been naive a year ago, but I am definitely not as naive as I was back then. Little more seasoned, understand the, the procedures a little better. Still make some mistakes. The Governor and Lieutenant Governor, Madam Speaker, if they make mistakes, this is not a job about not making mistakes. We're going to make mistakes, they're going to make mistakes. This is a job about leadership, making people around you better, whatever branch, the legislative branch, the ad lute branch, or the executive branch, the judiciary branch, it's about leadership. It's about convincing others to lead the way, know the way, and show the way. Not to tell them to, if you don't like it, get out of here. Governor and Lieutenant Governor took a 10% rate pay cut for one year, including senior staff, while the legislature gave themselves a 10% raise. Approximately 10%. No public hearing. No debate. Maybe even a referendum would have been something to consider. Not sure if it was even possible at that time, but why not? But we took care of ourselves before we took care of anyone else, before this hay implementation and recommendation were implemented. We did, and nobody in here is going to deny that. Because I have not seen any of the appropriations of the money that, that was given. But yet, we still have people in this body that say, hey, look at me, I'm the only one I would like to make an amendment on page 11. I mean, I'm sorry, page three, section three, line 11. I'd like to amend $60,840 If we're going to, Madam Speaker, as I heard earlier today, if we're going to really support our employees of this government, and we're talking about people being at the top and at the bottom or in the middle, and if we really want to be on the same ship, if we really want to to improve morale, momentum, if we really want to put our monies where our mouths are and our arguments are. We've enjoyed a pay raise for almost four years. Our lives got better. Maybe not a lot, 10% is not a lot, but our lives got better. I think maybe it's time to give back now. We're talking about pay raises, but we've already got one, so we don't need. Of course, everybody's not going to be, uh, for a pay raise for the legislature because they already got one. It's a no-brainer, but some people use that as a ploy to get elected again. I won't use this as a ploy to get elected. I did this two months into my, my term with my good friend from, um, Tumuning slash Ganyu Heights, Senator Lim Tiyako. We withdrew that bill. Because we didn't have the support and we didn't have the votes. But what I hear from everybody here today, or, or most of the speakers, is it might pass now because we're so worried about everyone else's pay and we want to be that, that, that leadership that leads, that, that everyone seems to be on board. So, um, I'm curious to hear what, what this body has to say and, 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 um, I'm, I'm asking for everyone's support and for a vote, I would like to call a roll call for that.
On the amendment, which is on page two, line 11, well...
Madam Speaker, can we take a two-minute recess because I'm not sure of what the speakers' pay at that time was too, so could we just clarify the speakers' pay and make an adjustment?
I'm going to take a brief recess.
But don't, don't even go there. The legislature's back in session. So Senator McCready, you have the floor.
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, thank you. The compensation for the speaker, Madam, Madam Speaker, should be sixty-two thousand five hundred a year? Or sixty-two thousand five hundred, such compensation shall be paid out of the funds appropriated to Illes Lutur and Guam. And the compensation of fifty-five thousand three oh seven should be paid to the, to this body.
So on line twelve, and with the language, of course, but the numbers will be fifty-five thousand three hundred and seven, and then on line fourteen, sixty-two thousand five hundred.
Line, line, yes, yes.
Line fourteen. And then, of course, the language will, in letters, will correspondingly change to the numbers. On that amendment, Senator, I have Senator, on the amendment, Senator Duñez, I have Speaker Ben, and I have Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the amendment. I would like to, at this time, Madam Speaker, amend the amendment. And that would be after the speaker's salary of sixty-two thousand five hundred would read, "Any funds deappropriated from senatorial salaries shall be remitted to DPW for busing operations."
Shall be remitted to?
The Department of Public Works, DPW, for bus operations.
For bus operation? On the amendment, to the amendment, we have to deal with that first, which will be then the Duñez amendment to the amendment. I have the Vice Speaker, Senator, wait.
I just wanted a point of information based on, on the amendment. I thought that when this was done in the past, that there was a process that needed to go through to transfer the funds. Are, what, what are we doing? I don't know.
There, I, I, okay. When, okay, maybe somebody should speak down there, not me up here, about exactly what I know the Senator's talking about. So maybe, Mr. Vice Speaker, are you able to do that?
Madam, Madam Speaker, I, if we're going to be doing pet projects, I'd like the, the amounts that are saved from our salaries to go to sanctuary. We know that they're ready to close. And so I, I would amend it, that the amount that's saved from our salaries go to sanctuary rather than bus.
Okay, all right. There's, there's some languages that have to be corrected. First of all, because to do that, you're going to have to deappropriate and reappropriate. And I know in the past, we've done that before with two other bills, and it actually has gone to a public hearing, so we're going to take a brief recess first to actually iron this out, no, brief recess. Legislature's back in session, I just want to make sure I read this incorrectly, so that both the clerks, legal counsel, myself have it. The amendment from Senator Duñez is that any, and that's a new sentence, okay? Any funds deappropriated from senatorial salary shall be remitted to DPW for bus operations. Is that correct, Senator?
That's correct.
Okay, so then now, on the amendment, oh.
That's an amendment to the amendment.
Okay, yeah, so, you're right, that's going to be from, the, the Vice Speaker is from DPW to sanctuaries. You're deleting? Well, no, you always go to that most recent, then you work your way back. Unless it changes, of course.
Then it, it should probably read to Guam Behavioral Wellness, Department of Guam Behavior, whatever that, to augment the sanctuary sal, contract.
Guam Behavioral and Wellness Center to augment the sanctuary contract? Is that what it is, contract? Okay. So the, and this is the last amendment that can be made now, I want you to know, before this one particular amendment, amendment, is that to amend, that it not go to DPW for bus operations, but instead to the Guam Behavior and Wellness Center to augment the sanctuary contract. On that amendment, okay, let me get everybody first. I have, so Mr. Vice Speaker, that's all you're going to do, is just make that amendment, you're not going to speak any further. Okay, so. Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of the Vice Speaker's amendment, and I would like to share with the body that it was, two days ago, I was on the phone with the Director of Public, DPW, Department of Public Works, wow, my head, Department of Public Works. And, Madam Speaker, during the conversation, when I was asking about the status of our buses, he said that he has enough buses. His challenge at DPW is getting the drivers. And so as drivers are retiring, it's challenging for them to get them processed. So I wanted the senators to, to know that, because I, I believe everyone is supportive of student transportation for all of our schools. And with that piece of information, I would ask that we do support the services out of behavioral wellness, whether it's through sanctuary or otherwise. But we do know that we, from the secrastration cuts, there have been some cuts to grants that our nonprofits are handling. And so this, if this, if this goes through, then it would be good to be able to support behavioral wellness with our children and our adolescents. Thank you.
On the Vice Speaker's amendment, Senator Duñez, and then I have Senator Sanicless.
Madam Speaker, in light of my good colleague from Timoting, and that up-to-date information, although of course, it's my passion, but that's key information, and as Director of Department of Youth Affairs, I also worked closely with sanctuary, and I understand their need, and I, I like the Vice Speaker's amendment. So at this time, Madam Speaker, I withdraw my amendment to the amendment.
So on the motion then to withdraw, to withdraw the Duñez amendment for DPW, no objections, so ordered, we're back to then the amendment to the amendment, which is the Vice Speaker's amendment, and, no, no. You're right, so, and so he withdrew it. So we're back now to the Vice Speaker's own amendment. Oh, that's right. Sorry, Chris, sorry, Mr. Vice Speaker. So, Mr. Vice Speaker, you're right, since it automatically deleted yours, we're back to you.
Then my motion would be to, to have the deappropriated funds go to Guam Behavioral Wellness for the purp, for the specific and sole purpose of underwriting the child services provided by sanctuary.
Okay, so there are no objections? But you'd like to speak, Senator? Okay, this is a behavioral Guam and Wellness Center to, now you changed it from to augment, but to specifically, to specifically. That it specifically goes to child services? I think I need to get that right amendment, because we're going to take a brief recess first. So the Vice Speaker, the language is, "Any funds deappropriated from senatorial salaries shall be remitted to the Guam Behavior and Wellness Center for a specific purpose of underwriting sanctuary contract for child services." Okay. On the Vice Speaker's amendment, and I, I have Senator Sanicless. Sanicless, Senator Sanicless.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have no objections to, to funding priorities, but what I would like the opportunity to do is for us to first address this question of salary cuts for senators. I would like us to, to face that head-on, I'm fully prepared. And after we have had the roll call vote on that question, then we can decide where the money's going to go. But I don't want the issue to get all confused of where money's going, we haven't even identified whether or not money's in fact going to be there. So I rise in objection to the amendment, not because I don't believe that that funding source is valid, I believe that it is. But let's first face up to the initial amendment of whether or not these cuts are something that we should be entertaining.
Yes, Senator, you can do a point of information.
Madam Speaker, and maybe I, I just want to raise a point of inquiry or a point of information based on my previous inquiry asked on the process of how it's done, because in the past, when this subject came up, and we were deappropriating from the legislature to go into another branch of government, that we had to do a standalone bill, and I don't know if that's in the standalone.
So, Senator, that, that should be a point of order, however, I'm going to ask you to state the order, the rule, in that, in that particular case. But I understand where you're coming from, and that's why I have, you know, taken a, a brief recess.
So then, can I get a findings on that, to at least tell me? Can you take a minute recess?
Okay, we're going to take a brief recess. Okay, we're going to take a brief recess.
Madam Speaker, I withdraw my amendments, and I'll make the afterwards.
The amendment is withdrawn, no objections, so ordered. So on the original amendment of Senator McCready, and we're bifurcating this to make sure, but, you know, we'll talk about it together, but we're bifurcating the vote. So on the first amendment that he proffered was on line 12, page 2, to change the salary down to 55,307. On yours, on your amendment. On the first one, so, and you spoke, yes, and so I'm opening it up now for our colleagues to speak. So on that amendment, on the 55,307. No, I, no, now we're not yet voting, I said I'm going to allow others to speak on that specific, yes, yes. So on that, then I have Speaker Panglinen and Senator Morrison. And, no, no, on the, yes, yes, the McCready amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want to rise to just provide information, I guess that may not be available to those that are listening. I have no objection to the amendment. I just want to say that the number that I had placed in here with regards to the salary level was a proposal put forth by my Republican colleague. And I just, in making these changes and looking at the executive pay plan and so forth, and making those adjustments, I agree with his original proposal of setting these salaries at this level, and I integrated that into the bill. So this was not a number that I would have put in, had I not decided to do so, but I have no objections.
Okay, I have Senator Morrison, and then Senator Saniklis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I, wow, how things have took a major twist today. I did try it for a recess, and hopefully we, as they say, cooler minds prevail. I just want to share my concerns with my good colleague who is proffering this amendment to reduce senatorial salaries, and I will kindly ask that he reconsider that motion as well. I think we have truly deviated far, far, far away from what the true intentions of this study, this hay plan that was vetted for many years by HR consultants, and the work that many of us commended them for. I also ask that the author of 278 also kindly consider the possibility of tabling this bill, Bill 278. There's a lot of friendly fire taking place right now, Madam Speaker. And, but, you know, Madam Speaker, we have to be honest with ourselves, this is, I don't think, truly, this is our clear, our true intentions of what we're trying to do. We are trying to fix a long overdue pay scale, a long overdue injustice to our salaries for compensating them for what they're worth. And again, some of my colleagues stated earlier, to retain the best, attract the best, so that way we can better serve our people. Is it a perfect plan? Is it a perfect plan? Madam Speaker, I was a former director of the Bureau of Statistics Plans, we have great planners up there. Even they too never consider that their plans are vetted to be perfect, but we do expect refinements over time. I'm concerned, Madam Speaker, that if we proceed and continue to deviate, I want to put on record, Madam Speaker, that we have to caution, I caution my colleagues, again, that we are playing around with lives, we are playing around with this body. And we are also going far reaching to a point, we are playing around with our co-equal branches of government, the executive branch as well. Madam Speaker, I am not trying to say that these 10 cents paychecks or these $6 paychecks are not a concern to me. But I met a long-term educator, and we had a good discussion about this. And she got a very small check, and she was basically saying, you know, Senator, I'm not, I don't have a problem with this. But I know some do, and I understand. So I asked her, what is your problem, Madam Speaker, ma'am, and she just said, "I just wish maybe HR would kindly explain what happened here." I think that's where we separate ourselves, Madam Speaker, and allow the executive branch, the onus is on them, to explain to these employees, what happened here, why is it done this way? Instead of us take pulling and again extracting from here, and now we're at the point where we're pinning ourselves against each other. It's clear, Madam Speaker, this is a plan put in place by previous legislatures, previous governor, our current governor has put a plan in place that also puts, makes this more all-inclusive, to include all local branches of government. And I'm, I'm just saying that there is a movement here in our body that, I, we all sense it here, Madam Speaker, the tone is clear. We are looking like, see, I got you. Don't do this, or I'll get you this way. And, Madam Speaker, so I asked my colleagues, I asked my colleagues kindly, the author of Bill 278, to possibly table this for a moment and to reconsider, and maybe call on administration. We have the power of oversight, Madam Speaker, to call in these agency heads, and to figure out what happened here so we can own an explanation to those who feel that there is some discrepancies in their pay, and to make it clear to them, so that way we can make, put it all on the table and make it, this is what, basically explaining, this is what happened. Again, I go back, Madam Speaker, to that discussion with a very longtime educator, and she really made it clear that all we need is HR professionals who conducted this study, or who is implementing this, to come out and clearly explain what happened here. And again, Madam Speaker, we all fought for ensuring that there is an appeal process in place. We didn't even allow the appeal process to even exhaust, to even go to a point where these folks can go through that process and ensure that, was this just, or can we fix it? Madam Speaker, I ask the good colleagues, the author of the amendment, and the author of Bill 278, and the cosponsors, to re-take a look at this, reconsider this movement. And then call in the executive branch, call in the professionals, let's get the explanation all on the table, and put it forth to our employees. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator, Senator Saniklis, we recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I never got a raise. When I was considering running for office back in May, a few years ago, the salary is what it continues to be. And making that decision to run for office was a very difficult one. I felt like it was a calling. It was one that I've answered with all of my heart, and given everything that I have. And I continue to do that, to this day. I value every single dollar that the people pay me to do their work here. And to value that dollar requires to take very difficult positions. It requires being willing to speak truth to power, and all the lack of opportunities that comes with that. Because I firmly believe that serving our people is the highest calling that we can ever answer, short of serving our Lord. And we must fulfill that calling in giving everything that we have, everything that we have, and approaching every issue as plainly and as honestly as possible, with as little intent to confuse, deceive, or misdirect. This amendment, Madam Speaker, is another intention of misdirection. This entire bill is not about cuts, it's about raises. It's about making sure that we're not giving out raises to any elected officials, directors, deputy directors. And it's intended to not give out those raises so that we can have more money for the other rank-and-file employees. The governor's trying to throw $25,000 at us, he wants to raise us to $85,000 to bring us on board with this whole action. We're saying no. We're saying no to those raises with this bill. But this amendment now is yet another intention to misdirect and deceive, to try and turn it into cuts, and to put us on a point of brinksmanship, where you say, are you going to hurt yourself now? And Madam Speaker, the amendment has to do with the question of the people's money, and how much we are compensated by the people. And when it comes to being compensated by the people with the people's money, I have some questions that I would like to proffer to the offer of the amendment, so that he can fully answer exactly how much of the people's money he is being compensated. Because he's willing to make a stand here and act like he's trying to make other things a priority by taking this.
Point of personal privilege, Madam, can we talk about a bill, we don't have to address the author of the amendment?
Madam Speaker, we're talking about the people's money and how much you're compensated by the people's money with respect to how much the people pay us. And so when we're talking about total compensation, let's ask that question, and let's get those answers. And my first question would be, how much is your value, how much are you making from the people in your contract with the airport?
Senator, I would have to say that that question is not.
Point of personal privilege.
I'm taking care of that, that, please keep the remarks that you have specific to the reduction of the salary, but not anyone's personal assets or income.
Madam Speaker, I believe that is very relevant.
Madam Speaker, I know we're in session, I know we have immunity, but he needs to tread carefully, because he has no idea what he's talking about. And I own no company, can I just explain to you?
No, you don't. All you have to do is ask for a point of personal privilege.
Point of personal privilege, please. Point of personal privilege.
Yes, but then.
I know he has immunity.
Senator, yes. Senator, please keep your remarks then to the amendment.
Yes, Madam Speaker, my remarks are with respect to the compensation that we receive from the people. That's what this amendment is referencing, what is our compensation from the people? And the reason why it's important for us to fully vet this question is because the compensation that we receive from the people determines who we work for. Who do we work for? I have no contracts with this government. The offer of the amendment does.
Senator, please just stick to the amendment.
Madam Speaker, point of personal information again.
I just told the Senator.
Are we going to let him abuse his authority? Are we going to let him abuse?
Do you want me to rule you are the border? I'm trying to, I brought it to his attention.
Madam Speaker, I'm talking about my compensation and who I work for. This compensation, this compensation is coming from the people, I'm talking about the people's money. And the people's money, Madam Speaker, is what the issue is here with respect to this amendment. Some of us here, Madam Speaker, myself in particular, only make this money. I'm saying no to a raise, a $25,000 raise that could really help my family. I'm not saying in this bill, let's cut anybody. What I am saying is, if we're going to be giving raises, let's make sure that we give raises first to our rank-and-file employees. The proffer of the amendment now wants to take it a step further, and he wants to cut our pay. And he doesn't want to talk about anything else. Doesn't want to talk about anything else. And it's so convenient to be able to pigeonhole the conversation into that kind of a topic. And the question becomes, at what point can that question ever be asked? If surely not on the floor of this legislature, at what point can we ever explore truly how compensation from the people reflects the work that we do for the people? This amount of money, Madam Speaker, that I make was the amount that I came into office with. I never received a raise. My family, we work hard, we struggle to try and make sure that the amount of money that we have to include this amount that the offer of the amendment is trying to cut, that that amount of money is going to be able to provide for our family as well. And I know that there are a lot of people who believe that senators make a lot of money, and as that compares to a lot of the salaries, although it's true that we do have nice salaries. But we also have a lot of our own needs as well, and we don't have, some of us, myself in particular, don't have. And we don't have, some of us, myself in particular, don't have money coming in from other sources to be able to say, hey, take this down 5,000, take this down 10,000, take this down 50,000. And for a person like me, Madam Speaker, a raise of 25,000 would really help. But even I am willing to say no to that. Even I am willing to say no to that in order to prioritize our classified and unclassified employees, our rank-and-file employees. Absolutely not. But to now say that we need to cut ourselves as part of this political misdirectioning game, let me put into perspective, Madam Speaker, what this means for me as a working-class man, an average, an average family man. My son, my son is autistic. Excuse me.
We're gonna take a brief recess. The legislators back in session. Senators Nicholas, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I beg the indulgence of the bodies as I struggle to get through this. My son is autistic. He requires treatments. We had to buy a swing, not because we wanted to get a swing, we had other things we need to buy, but part of his treatment is getting him on a swing. It's been an incredible eye-opener for, for me, with my boy, to be able to see the great need we have in this community for specialists and professionals. And with the resources that I earn, my wife earns, we were fortunate enough to be able to get him out to see a specialist back in November. And the specialist said, come back every six months. He needs occupational therapy, he needs, you know, there's a lot of things that he needs. And because of our limited means, and because I used to be a financial advisor, we were able to take what we have and plan around our lifestyle and plan to be able to get my son out to his appointment this June. And, and that's why, with respect to understanding that, I never go around saying we need to be going and cutting people for this or cutting people for that. That's also why, too, giving out raises that we're not gonna be able to sustain is also a scary thought, because then people's lifestyles adjust those increases in pay, and whether or not they're going to be able to continue to make ends meet based on that adjusted lifestyle. If we have to pull back any of these raises in the future because of poor planning or what have you, we're gonna hurt people. I never want to hurt people, Madam Speaker. We need to make sure that the work that we're doing in here is going to be building us up, making things better. And so for me, when I, when I decided to run for office, and when this issue of cutting pay came up earlier in the year, about a year and a half ago, I think, I said, let's, let's make pay cuts voluntary. Let's make pay cuts voluntary, because I know that I'm willing to come in here and work every day for the people, and that that work is going to close off opportunities for me if I was a little bit more amenable. But that's a commitment I made, to work for the people and to earn every single dollar that they pay me. And that's the reflection of my work all the way into this day. And if there are those who want to voluntarily reduce their pay because, you know, it's not gonna really affect them or whatever, fine. Voluntarily reduce your pay and let your work reflect whatever income you're getting. I need to earn every single dollar. I need to take my boy to his treatments. I need to take care of my son. And that's why this new amendment that is taking us on the road of cuts is an entirely separate conversation altogether. It's, for me, a very personal political pain, a very personal political pain. Because, man, if I was just a little different in the way I do my work in here, maybe life would be so much easier. Maybe I would be able to go out and get a government contract. I'm talking about myself, people. I'm talking about myself. I can't even talk about myself. If I was a little bit more amenable, maybe I would be able to go out and have, have more resources to provide. But I made a firm commitment to the people when I decided to run for office. And that commitment included doing whatever it is I have to do to serve them, them, even if it meant not having as many opportunities. And I've been firm on that. I have taken great satisfaction in the work that I've done for the people. And it comes at a price, it comes at an opportunity cost. But for it now to be materializing into a very personal cost, this is not about me wanting an extra $5,000 so that I can go and enjoy life a little bit better. This is about my boy, this is about my son, this is about his autistic treatment. These cuts that are now being proposed that are way outside of the realm of raises are just a piling on of the burden of having to serve the people wholeheartedly without fear of consequence. Consequences manifest. I will continue to give my all to the people, regardless of how much I make. It's a commitment I made to them. I also have a commitment to my son, a commitment to my family. And I believe that all of that is inseparable. A man who loves his family, loves his children, can surely extend that love to his people. And you should never be put into a situation where you must choose one or the other. And I have faith that our people will judge us for the work that we do, for the good that we bring, and for how much we try to build and look out for them, not by how much we cut ourselves to try and prove our love. And so in that holistic picture of my love for the people, my love for my family, my love for my son, I welcome this roll-call vote. And I ask that it be known as Caleb's roll-call vote. Caleb Michael Coase and Nicholas's roll-call vote. You wanna cut and hurt people? Let's put a name to it. You wanna take this politics to a whole new level where you're going to be cutting and hurting and causing pain to a six-year-old boy? Let's put a name to it. You know, we always hear about the medical fundraisers and all those kind of things, but there's also real, real needs, too, that we have to address. And to say that we need to go out there and help others is so important, and it absolutely is, surely. I'd like to ask for this body to please donate to my son Caleb's medical fundraiser, so he can go and get treatment. I call for the question of a live roll-call vote, Caleb Michael Coase and Nicholas's roll-call vote.
On the amendment, Senator, oh, I thought he was, oh, you're calling for the question, so then Senator Uggan, I'm sorry then. So, all those in favor then of the reduction of the senatorial salaries to 55,307? No, he just said he's gonna call for the vote, that's... Yes, but he's, there is a question to call for the vote, that's what it is, for what it is, so therefore, wait, let me please explain. And then Senator Uggan, to let him know that he's on the list and wanted to speak, so now he no longer can speak because there's a call for the vote. And then, yes, earlier, Senator McCready did say that, that he would like for a roll-call vote, and then Senator Ada now requested for one, but there needs to be a third. Okay, so then, please don't jump the gun until you know, I'm telling you exactly what needs to be done. So there's a roll-call vote now, three have requested for it. Senator McCready, Senator Tony Ada, and Senator Duñez. And we're bifurcating, I said earlier, so we're gonna do the next one, okay? So the, then, so the reduction of, yes, the senatorial salaries from 60,840 to 55,307 roll-call. Senator Tom Ada, Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada, Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan, Senator Uggan, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz, Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Duñez, Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limtiaco, Senator Limtiaco, aye. Senator McCready, Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison, Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Pangolinen, Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Respecho, Senator Respecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez, Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sennecles, Senator Sennecles, nay. Speaker Wampat, Speaker Wampat, nay. Senator Yamashita, Senator Yamashita, nay. Senator Morrison, Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Morrison, Senator Morrison, aye. On the amendment for the senatorial salary reduction, seven yays, eight nays. The amendment failed. And the second amendment, which is to reduce the speaker's salary, same three? Yeah, yeah, well, I know originally, yeah, so... Yeah, well, I know originally, yeah, so. I, I know, but I, see, at the time when I said it was because I know I had the vice speaker's amendment to, I said I wanted to bifurcate the two. And so I've been corrected then that based on the amendment that we have here that both of them were included, so. All right. Okay. Okay, so then now, um, are you done then, Senator McCready? Because you're the one that had the last, you had the floor the last time. You're done. So on the main motion, now back to the main motion. I had Senator. Yeah. So Senator Morrison, I have you on the main motion. Oh, is that for their, oh, that one? Okay, okay, sorry. Okay, so on the main motion then, Senator Duñez.
Madam Speaker, thank you, and introduce Massey for the opportunity to rise to speak on Bill 278. I want to start by expressing extreme disappointment. The amendment that we just got through, voting on, and the comments made, I warn the members on this floor is, as an assistant minority leader, is an insult. And as far as I'm concerned, is an abuse. An abuse of immunity on this floor. My good colleague, I understand and I sympathize with his situation. As the Director of Department of Youth Affairs, I met with families on a daily basis and saw them in crisis. That's why I was supporting the money to go to sanctuary, which now won't because it's moot point. I would ask and I would pray in the future the so-called hard work. One of the colleagues on this floor took such abusive privileges of just talk about my colleague. Do it for you. Get the information. Put the information on this floor so the veracity of those statements can be tested. I'm insulted.
Senator, I'm not going to allow you to move further to accuse any member of any type of abusive type of language because I do not, I do not hear that.
Madam Speaker, I think it's the same privilege.
I'd like for you to continue.
I will continue.
But I do not want you to, you know,
I will continue, Madam Speaker.
Put into somebody else's mouth saying that it was abusive.
I will continue, Madam Speaker. I had to get that on the record. Madam Speaker, with, just gonna do a little fact check going down the line here with a lot of the statements that have been made about this bill. Obviously, members who introduced this bill, 278, saw the wisdom of keeping the mayor's pay intact. I even heard on the floor by some member saying, "No elected official." There was no motion to include mayors, just a statement. So I congratulate those who put this bill together and decided to recognize the true work that our mayors do. I call them mini DPW out there in the villages. Madam Speaker, I heard a member on this floor speak to the insults of the Attorney General issue of pay, and I agree. I was not part of a resolution on this body to remove officers because I believe in the officers in this body. I believe in our legal counsel. Yet those statements are made. I think there's amnesia for some of those who presided and they suddenly have a true, true change of heart when it comes to their desire to support our officers who have been duly elected in this 32nd August body. Madam Speaker, I heard members on this floor who held the job that I held before, also held before me. In fact, I took the reins from Senator Rispisho at Department of Youth Affairs, say, "In the 27th, we took a 10% pay cut." Well, Madam Speaker, so did the Camacho administration. I believe the record will show 1,700 employees, I remember. I remember sitting down because of our critical staff, our so-called unclassified staff that were clinicians, social workers, people who delivered critical services to our youth. Dr. Juan Repadas. We were all scrambling to make sure that we could pay them and keep them on board. And we had to meet and call federal officials to make sure we weren't supplanting their salaries to allow them to be in federally funded programs. And we got the approval, Madam Speaker. So there was plenty of sacrifice during the early days of the Camacho administration taking over the reins of government. Madam Speaker, there's a discussion here on tax refunds that bounced around for a little while and how much effort was put into that. Yet I bet you if we fact-checked that too, and I don't think I'm abusing immunity here, it's probably unprecedented, $20 million paid out even before April 15th comes. Taxpayers are going in droves up to revving tax. Even my tax preparer, I pull up to the parking lot and I drive away because they're all there to file. I got so many other points, but I'm not gonna waste the body's time, Madam Speaker. I'm gonna make two final points as I close. One is, my good colleague Senator Morrison, I think he was on the right track. Because I'm gonna call this for what I think it is. I think this bill is, I don't want to reduce my salary. But if I have to, if I'm not gonna take that 20-some thousand dollar increase, those others aren't gonna get it either. I'm gonna vote for this bill, Madam Speaker. I'm gonna sustain that vote solely because what happened to me and my other friends on this floor, when Bill 20 got folded into 19, it's the same thing that happened here with my good colleague. Having Bill 276 merged into 278, that's really what Section 3 is. But misery loves company. Bring on everybody with us. Come on, directors, you're not worth it. AG, sorry, your lawyers are, not you. On and on and on. Sandbox. I'm taking my ball, I'm not gonna play. I think Senator Morrison is right. I think we should have this bill withdrawn, and if we really want to stand up. Get 276 on the floor. Let's vote to lock in our salaries where we are. I said the administration lived with their recommendation acceptance of hay. As I pointed out earlier, the accounting error on the directors, that should be fixed, and I will hold them to that. I don't make that statement on this floor lightly. I will go down there to BBMR myself and everybody else who's gonna process payroll, I'll go talk to my friend Benita. Say, "Benita, samoa?" That's what they said here to us, to make it known that the executive is not getting 100% implementation. Pull that back and pull that retro. Probably won't matter anyways because it's gonna, oh, we just passed. I guess I get to get interrupted again.
Yes. The point of information is that the plan submitted by the governor, which he is saying he's implementing pursuant to the law, is 100% of the executive pay. Now, is the governor now implementing a new hay plan? That's only 50% for the executive pay? Because that's not what he submitted. So what is it? Laws don't matter anymore? So that's the question I have. If that's the case, then I think that the governor should submit a new plan that says 50% for the executive pay. He has to.
We'll allow the administration to stand by that and then let them make the determination whether they're redoing the law. The statement was made, and it's worth being made on this floor, Madam Speaker, whether the retiring point of information likes it or not. So in closing, I'm ashamed of the sandbox mentality. I'm ashamed of, I'm taking my ball and I'm not gonna play. And I'm ashamed that what I asked for last week, we don't sit here and do like my good colleagues asked for. We really care about those employees, but we're not gonna get to it. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I will vote in the affirmative on 278.
On the main motion, I have Senator McCready and then Senator Tony Ada. Brent McCready? No, Senator Tony Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, once again, here we are. It's not on a Saturday. It's after 5:00 PM. We were called, I got an email calling us into session at 11:30, at 1:30 today. 11:30 this morning, my email came in that we're going into session at 1:30. We come into session and our desks are emptying. We don't have anything on there. 11:32, a bill gets introduced, 1:32, a bill gets introduced. But it still doesn't hit our desks until almost quarter to 2:00. We had the public hearing waived. We had a request to have the public hearing waived. And you granted that request. And that was as set forth in Section 2103 of Title II Guam Code annotated. And when I read the GCA, Section 2103, "Public hearings mandatory. No bill may be passed by Eles Latura unless it has received a public hearing, except when the presiding officer of Eles Latura certifies that an emergency condition exists involving danger to the public, to the public health or safety. The requirement for a public hearing may be waived, and in the event the bill is identical to a bill introduced earlier, which later bill received a public hearing, then the public hearing for the identical bill may be waived." When I was reading that, I had to read it over and over and over. And I even had to seek the advice of legal counsel. Two conditions must exist. Danger to public health or safety and a public hearing on an identical bill introduced earlier. Then, and only then, may the bill, the public hearing be waived. So I don't see the emergency of Bill 278. I don't see what emergency exists because of the fact that a veto override attempt was done on February 14th, and today is February 20. Six days passed and nothing had happened. So where is the emergency? We shouldn't even be voting on this bill. No bill may be passed by Eles Latura unless it received a public hearing. So now we just arbitrarily listen to bills now without public hearings. So where do we go from here now? Are we still voting on Bill 278? Knowing, knowing that an emergency does not exist and the public hearing was waived? If you want to go into recess so that we can get the parliamentary ruling on it and decide whether it does exist and a public hearing was held on an earlier bill?
Point of order, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, at the time you gave your ruling, I believe there was no objection, and that would have been the time to raise the objection then.
Yes, I did.
So I oppose the request of the good minority leader to go into a recess.
Senator, can you please stick to the main motion then of the bill itself, the subject matter of the bill? Because everyone had an opportunity, yes, and it has been done before, to challenge the speaker's ruling.
Madam Speaker, I believe that, I'll stick to the main motion. Are we violating Section 2103 of Title II GCA for public hearings that are mandatory? I'd like to get, I'd like to get a ruling on that. Are we in violation?
Point of order again, Madam Speaker, I believe you responded to that issue
I did, and I'm going to
it would have been more appropriate to raise an objection at that time.
Repeat myself again, is that when the motion was made.
Madam Speaker, every time we raise a motion, you guys object.
You had an opportunity to object, and I would call for the vote, to challenge my decision. So we're moving forward. Speak, please, to the bill. And I'm not gonna read the title of the bill in which, you know, I'm asking you to speak to the bill itself. That's the main motion then.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. So anybody else who would like to speak on the main motion and Bill 278? Senator Limtiako.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to first kind of reiterate the retiring speaker's comments regarding how this bill was handled. And first, how the leadership of this body goes about its business. You know, and you had made a comment earlier when we were on recess about preserving the sanctity of this body. Yet, the retiring speaker points out clearly that we're in violation of our own laws. And yet, we use a rule to determine whether or not an objection was made timely to make it a priority.
Senator, can you please stick to the main motion?
I am.
If you want five-minute remarks at the end of session, I'll gladly give you that five-minute remark. Time then if you want to chastise the speaker.
Madam Speaker, I'm just referring to the bill and how the bill was introduced. And so it is regarding the main motion. When we waive the rules, whether it's in the rules or not, doesn't differentiate between whether it's right or wrong. Just because a rule exists and we utilize the rule or the leadership of this body utilizes the rule to its advantage doesn't make it right or wrong. And I would argue that it's wrong. And I go back to the last session where a similar resolution was done under the guise of darkness on a Saturday to accomplish the goals of the leadership of this body.
Senator, are you speaking about the salary pay increases or not?
I'm speaking about how-
Otherwise, I'm gonna rule you out of order, I'm sorry.
Okay, Madam Speaker, thank you. I would just ask, going forward, Madam Speaker, that we do what's right and we follow the rules. Not only that we follow the rules, but we do what's right. Not only that we follow the rules, but we do what's right. And Madam Speaker, on Bill 278, it was this time last year in January where Bill 30 was introduced. And it accomplishes exactly what Section 3 of Bill 278 does in addition to Senator McCready's failed motion for the salary reduction. And when we look back at Section 30, it's exactly, it's almost word for word, except for the dollar figure. And back then, when Bill 30 was introduced, as it applies to Section 3 of Bill 278, it had strong opposition against it. There were two main sponsors on that bill. And at one point in time, earlier today, we got a little bit closer, but it still failed. Senator McCready's amendment failed seven to eight. But we got a step closer. Earlier this week, on February 17th, Bill 276 was introduced, which is the exact language that appears in Bill 278 in Section 3. Once again, we're getting a step closer. And it just goes back to the fact that it's taken a year from the introduction of Bill 30 to finally get this body to listen to what we've been saying a year ago. And I commend the author. I don't think I had to convince the author. I think the author always knew all along what the right thing to do was. And I commend him for adding Section 3 in there. Now, of course, I would have preferred that Bill 30 was passed so we could have addressed it a year ago. I would have also preferred that Bill 276 was given an expeditious public hearing, would have gone through the normal process that this body requires to have a public hearing, been put on today's session as well. But that privilege was not allowed for Bill 276. And it goes back to my earlier comments, Madam Speaker, that the leadership of this body cannot pick and choose how business is conducted here. We talk about the sanctity of this body. We talk about following the laws. Yet, we are guilty of violating the laws. The retiring speaker pointed out clearly, clearly the requirements. And yet, the speaker, the majority leader stands up and says, "Well, you didn't have, you didn't object to it." Okay, yes, that's the rule. But does that make it right? Absolutely not. So, when we talk about the sanctity of this body and yet we turn our face to what we should hold ourselves to, it represents poorly, Madam Speaker. And as our leader, I ask you, please, please, going forward, follow our rules, follow the law, do what is right. Give the same bills that have the same subject matter, the same courtesies that you would otherwise grant the majority. It's only fair. You know, when we talk about disposition, and further to Section 3, Madam Speaker, a year ago, we attempted to de-link senatorial pay to that of the Superior Court judges. And we received strong opposition to that. And I'm happy that the author chose to finally do away with a mechanism that would result in an automatic pay increase every time the Superior Court judges' pays were increased. We made reference to that effect of the HAEP study in which Superior Court judges' salaries were recommended to increase. That would have had an effect on senatorial pay. It would have resulted in a pay increase, provided that Superior Court judges received that pay increase. And that was my opposition to Bill 268. Is that that would have accomplished exactly what Bill 278 in Section 3 attempts to prevent. Same as in Bill 30, same as in Bill 276. And in full agreement, I'm in full agreement with them. And so, with Section 3, it finally, it finally de-links senatorial pay to that of Superior Court judges' pay. And it sets the salary at what it is today. Now, Bill 30 was withdrawn because it had no support. The opposition that existed to Bill 30 now supports it. It's taken a year to get the message through. And I thank this body for listening. And I thank this body for agreeing with it. And I thank this body for this bill and especially Section 3 as it pertains to it. Madam Speaker, it's an election year. This is only my first time in public office. And going through my first election definitely was an eye-opener. But if I think back to all the slogans and to all the speeches about what the priorities are, three things always rise to the top of the food chain. We talk about education. We talk about public safety. We talk about healthcare. And the HAEP study does its best. Obviously, it falls short in some areas. Needs to be addressed. It needs to go through that appeal process. So, those that weren't properly or fairly recognized that they go through that appeal process and it gets corrected. It's not perfect, but it's a start. And so, we address the classified and we address some of the unclassified in all of those three areas that we talked most about during election. Yet, Bill 278, in Exhibit A, has leadership positions that are still in those areas. What are we saying to how we prioritize our spending? What are we saying to every single person in this body always campaigning on, always saying we're going to prioritize education, we're going to prioritize public safety, we're going to prioritize healthcare? And yet, let's take education, for example. In Exhibit A, we prevent the superintendent of education from receiving their HEAP pay. We present, we prevent the director of our libraries from receiving their HEAP pay. The deputy superintendent of curriculum and instructional improvement, the deputy superintendent of educational support and community learning, the deputy superintendent of finance and administrative services, all in education. Is education not a priority? We look further on the list of Exhibit A. And we go to our next most common priority that we bring up. We talk about public safety. Now, everybody, I don't need to remind this body of all the crime that's happening right now. I don't need to remind this body about some of the steps that my colleague has taken to get tough on crime, to make it a priority. Yet, we prevent our chief of police, the head, the head of our public safety office as it relates to the police department from receiving his pay. We prevent the deputy fire chief, Madam Speaker. Those are just a couple, but there's many more in public safety. The director of corrections. The deputy director, excuse me, the director of DYA. The director of customs. We go to our next priority about healthcare. And you know, my true belief, I've served on the GMH board. I know how difficult it is. But the most difficult thing I saw that is always going to be a challenge to overcome is the turnover in the leadership roles. Because for such a large organization, it takes consistency. It takes a long-term plan to turn things around. It takes, it takes a long-term view to make sure that those changes are implemented. It just can't happen overnight. Yet, we're preventing the administrator of GMH, our hospital, our only civilian hospital, which this body has gone through great lengths to try and fix, to try and get them the funding that they need, to try and support them. The associate administrator of GMH, the chief medical examiner on this list, the deputy director of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the director of DPHSS, all healthcare-related fields. And so, Madam Speaker, if education and public safety and healthcare are our priority at a minimum, let's remove these people from this list. We talk about our financial situation. We talk about the lack of ability to have consistency in our collections process at revenue tax, yet the director of revenue and taxation is on this list. If that is not a priority, if not collecting our taxes is a priority, shouldn't we be recruiting and maintaining people that at least can, we can give them the opportunity to be compensated and to do their job? And I know the chairman on this committee has gone through great lengths to bring light to issues up there. And I know that there's been progress and I commend him for that. But what is this saying to him? What is this saying to the deputy director, excuse me, the director? The director of BBMR? For the first time in a long time, the governor's been able to be successful at managing the finances. But we prevent the director for BBMR, the director of DOA, or deputy director of DOA, from getting their pay. We talk about our homeless people, those that can't afford a home. And we talk about going through great lengths. I know that there's a chairman on this committee that is working with Guam Housing Corporation to try and get more people into homes, to get them, to find alternative structures so that people that can't afford a traditional home can at least get out of living under a tarp. Yet, we prevent the president of the GHC and the manager of GHC from getting their pay increases. So, Madam Speaker, you know, I'm just referring to our priorities. And so, I'd like to proffer an amendment, Madam Speaker. And the first amendment is that I'd like to remove those that are associated with these priorities. Firstly, with education. To remove the superintendent of education from this list. To remove the director of our library systems from this list. I'm sorry, it says right here. Whichever ones are applicable. And if we can take a small recess so I can write the amendment down, Madam Speaker.
We're going to take a recess.
We're gonna take a recess. The legislature is back in session. Senator Limpyako, I understand you have an amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just, just to reiterate, you know, the dialogue prior to the amendment is that if we're gonna prioritize spending, and, and part of Bill 278 is to do so, and we always prioritize, or at least attempt to prioritize, education, public safety, and healthcare, then Madam Speaker, my first amendment is to delete those positions in Exhibit A that are associated with education. And that includes the superintendent of education, whether it applies or not, because it's in, on the exhibit. So any technical amendments that need to be made, I kindly ask a legal counsel to make those technical amendments. The director of library, as it is.
Excuse, I, and what I'm doing, because you don't have a copy of that, I have my highlighter here to go down, so go down and I'm gonna mark it. And so the clerk should also be able to follow you. So can we just tell us which?
Sure.
The left, middle, or the right?
Far-right column, bottom line, superintendent of education. The top of the right column, director, director of library. The top of the second, the middle column, deputy director of library. Several lines down, you have the deputy superintendent of assessment and accountability, deputy superintendent of curriculum and instructional improvement, the deputy superintendent of educational support and community learning, and the deputy superintendent of finance and administrative services. And Madam Speaker, any technical amendments that would be related to any position here that is associated with education?
Okay, so, alright, and then the next one?
That, that is the first amendment, Madam Speaker.
Yes, oh, you're, I thought you were gonna give us the whole list and then we're going to mark it down.
This is the first amendment. Do you want to include the entire list for all the subsequent amendments?
Yeah, because you're doing, you're going into Exhibit A, so, and that's why I'm highlighting it with the clerks as well.
Okay, I, I actually have the.
Oh, you didn't do it, you mean?
I did already, on the amendments, I have them highlighted.
Okay, so, go ahead then, because I'm listening. I'm listening to you and I'm marking them as you call them out.
Okay, go to the next proffered amendment? Is that what you want me to do?
No, no, wait.
The first amendment is specific to education, Madam Speaker.
Okay, I was just getting clarifica, I'm sorry, getting clarification with the clerks and legal counsel then, because whether, we're not voting on each one, one by one. You wanted to vote separately on just education first?
Yes, just the education positions.
Okay, where's everybody? Okay, so, with, with the senators, please, if you pull out your Exhibit A, on the far right, I'm just repeating what the senator had proffered in the amendment then to delete and prioritize these ones. The director of library, the superintendent of education on your far right, and then you go to the middle column, the top deputy director of the library. Then you go down to almost the middle, the deputy superintendents of assessment and accountability, curriculum and instruction, educational support, and finance. Those are the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven positions on education. On the amendment, Senator Yamashita, you recognize.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to proffer an amendment to the amendment in that, you know, honestly, a lot of our agencies really overlap, but in the, in the sphere of education, truly, yes, our public school system is, is the center, is crucial to teaching and learning. And of course, our libraries are there to help our communities engage in that. But Madam Speaker, education is also Fuji-connected and, and formulated, and particularly those of, those of us with disabilities through DISIT. And that kind of work continues through labor and AHRD. This is all education-related, Madam Speaker. And so I would like to ask that we include the director of DISIT, the director of labor, and the director of AHRD, who all concentrate a lot of their efforts in training programs in workforce development and preparing our people with the kinds of skill building they need to be able to earn a living.
I'm sorry, I, can, you have, can you repeat again the ones that you've mentioned?
Yes, ma'am.
You have AHRD.
AHRD, labor, and DISIT.
Labor, and DISIT. Okay, and.
Thank you.
I'm trying to find where's the column, is it in the middle column?
Uh, DISIT is in the middle column, towards the bottom.
Yes, I got that.
Sorry, I didn't highlight yet. Labor is way at the top, on the third column. And then AHRD is?
In the middle, okay.
In the middle, yes, ma'am, right in the middle, thank you.
So on the first amendment to the amendment, Senator Yamashita's included labor, AHRD, and DISIT. On that amendment to the amendment.
And could we include the deputy director of AHRD?
So on the amendment to the amendment first, director and deputy director of AHRD, the director of DISIT, and the director of labor. On that amendment. There's an objection. All in favor, please, on those who support then the deletion of those four on the amendment to the amendment, please. Raise your hand, all in favor. Yes. Yes, of the amendment. Amendment to the amendment first, then we do the amendment later on. The amendment failed. On the amendment, the main amendment by Senator Limpyako, will be, where am I? The director and deputy director of the library, the deputy superintendent's positions, four of them, and the superintendent of education. All in favor of deleting those four? There's an objection, all in favor, please, raise your hand of the amendment. Okay, sorry, yeah, amendment failed. Okay, you still have the floor, Senator Limpyako.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank, I appreciate that. You know, obviously, education isn't a priority. So I'd like to go to the next amendment, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the next amendment is to delete those, once again, going, falling back on our priorities. We attempted to amend education, that failed. We didn't get the support we needed from this body in order to prioritize education. So we will attempt to prioritize public safety, Madam Speaker. And so my second amendment is to delete those associated with public safety from Exhibit A. And starting from the left-hand column, Madam Speaker, working from the top to the bottom, the first one is the administrative director of public defender, chief of police.
Wait, wait, don't go, wait a minute, I'm trying to find you.
It's a far-left corner? I'm gonna work my way from the left to the right, top to bottom.
So.
Administrative director of public defender.
Okay, alright. And you said the chief of police? Okay, I got that, and clerks, please let me know.
Deputy chief of police.
Deputy chief of police. And you, but you're not leaving out the chief then?
No, the chief, the chief.
Okay.
So, once again, from the top.
And, yes, I've got the administrative director, public defender.
Chief of police.
Chief of police, and then the deputy chief of police.
Deputy director of DYA.
Deputy director of DYA, okay.
Our deputy fire chief, Madam Speaker.
Deputy.
We're going to the middle column now, working from the top to the bottom.
Deputy fire chief.
Director of corrections.
Director of corrections.
Director of customs.
Customs, corrections, okay.
Director of Department of Youth Affairs.
DYA, okay.
And then in the bottom section of the right-hand column, Madam Speaker, our fire chief for the Guam Fire Department.
Okay, that's on the right-hand column. Okay, that completes the list?
Yes, and once again, these are to be deleted from the list so that we can focus and prioritize our spending on the leadership of our public safety offices so that we can address issues with our public safety side of the amendment.
So I'm gonna repeat them one more time to make sure too that the clerk has these, administrative director of public defender, chief of police, deputy chief of police, deputy director of DYA, deputy fire chief, director of corrections, director of customs, director of DYA, and fire chief of GFD. On the amendment then to delete these positions from Exhibit A. Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I would like to offer an amendment to that amendment. And in the realm of public safety, as we determine our demographics and how, as we determine who is where and how we move things, the Bureau of Planning and Statistics and planning is very crucial to all of this work. So I would like to proffer an amendment to add Bureau of Planning statistics to the public safety realm. And that's in the middle column, towards the bottom middle. If that made sense. That's where we get our data.
BOSB?
Yes, ma'am.
So first, again, always the amendment to the amendment, which is to delete director for BOSB. Did you want to speak on it? Okay, on the amendment then to delete first, the only, is, okay, that's the BOSB only, right now we're dealing with. So on the amendment then to delete, then there's an objection, all in favor, please, raise your hand. The amendment failed. On the main amendment, which is the deputy director of public defender, chief of police, deputy chief of police, deputy director of DYA, deputy fire chief, director of corrections, director of customs, director of DYA, and the fire chief of GFD.
Madam Speaker, just a quick point of clarification, if, if I can get some guidance on that. Is the administrative director of public defender, is that a judiciary position? Or should it have been on this list to begin with?
No, they're, they're separate.
Separate, okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Yes.
Madam Speaker, I understand the author's intention of the amendment. And really, the intention, well, the effect of the amendment is to do what has failed in the earlier version of striking out the thing in Section 2, basically. And so we're now gonna go one by one. And that's okay. Again, I reiterate, the priority is the rank and file. And those at the top, I believe, can wait. And I'm, so these are, all we're doing is, is just the guys at the top. We're not doing anything about the guys at the bottom who are not getting the pay raise, who are getting the 50%, who are not getting the rate of pay, the increase in their pay scale. And so, yes, the priority is education, but it's, the priority is the teacher in the classroom. The priority is public safety, but it's the guy in the street. The priority is, you know, public health, but it's the environmental health inspector, and, and the entomologists, and the other positions there. The people at the top, I believe, are sufficiently compensated that time to allow them to wait until we resolve the issue of the people at the bottom who are not getting the full compensation of the hay. And so that's why I'm objecting to this. I would like to say that for me, my priority is the classified and unclassified and the people in the trenches. And like me, I'm not gonna get a pay raise. And I believe that those that have volunteered for public service by accepting these appointments can also wait until we take care of the people at the bottom. That's where the priority is. It's not that because I don't wanna give the director of public health a pay raise that I don't support health. No, I don't support giving the guy at the top while the guy at the bottom still is not giving his due. And I think we should take care of the guy at the bottom first. And that's why I object to this.
So on the main amendment for the safety, the related positions that I listed, and there's an objection, so all in favor of the amendment to delete those safety positions, public safety positions? Please raise your hand. Amendment failed. On the, Senator Limpyako, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, I agree with the retiring speaker that we wanna do exactly what he's trying to do. But we also wanna prioritize those three areas that we speak about every time we get in front of our constituents, whether it's the rank and file or the leadership. We don't bifurcate those when we're speaking to our constituents about that. We don't say we're gonna prioritize education, except for the leadership. We're gonna prioritize public safety, except for the leadership. We're gonna prioritize public health, except for the leadership. We don't say that, we say we're. We say we're gonna prioritize education. This list is an exhaustive list. It's long. And all we're trying to do is prioritize education, public safety, and healthcare. And so far, we've failed to pass our support for our education and prioritize education in that amendment. So far, we have failed to prioritize public safety. And so, Madam Speaker, I proffer my last amendment, and that's in relation to public And so, Madam Speaker, the last amendment is, starting from the left column, starting from the top, working our way down, the Administrator for GMH, the Associate Administrator for GMH, the Chief Medical Examiner, which I'm correct, I think we only have one on the island, the Deputy Director of GBHWC, the Deputy Director for...
Oh, wait, wait, on the, still on the first column?
That's on the, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, that's the top of the second column.
Okay, second column, okay. Deputy Director GBHWC.
The Deputy Director for DBHSS.
Okay, DPSS.
And the far-right-hand column, Madam Speaker, the fifth line down, the Director of DPHSS.
Director...
And Madam Speaker, if I missed any public health-related positions, and I see the good Senator Yamashita.
Yeah, you missed, I think, Director of GBHWC.
Oh, yes, correct.
Okay.
So, any technical amendments for positions that are related to public health, Madam Speaker, if those can be made. Thank you.
So, on the amendment, Senator Yamashita, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And absolutely understanding that the rank and file folks do a lot of the work, the leadership makes a difference in how that work gets done. And a healthy organization has, has leadership that is competent and adequately compensated. So, in that vein, I would like to offer an amendment to the mover of the amendment, and I would like to add to health, the Department, the Director for Parks and Recreation. Madam Speaker, the whole, the idea of Parks and Recreation absolutely adds to the holistic view of health on our island, and we need to do better at investing in that. And I see the Deputy Director of Parks and Rec in the second column, towards the top, but I just can't seem to figure out where the direct, oh, there, on the third column, the fourth, the fourth slot.
Yes, okay.
So, I'd like to proffer those amendments, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
So, on the amendment to the amendment first, which is the Director and the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. There's an objection, so I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. The amendment, to the amendment failed. On the main amendment, which is all of the positions for health, which is Administrator for GMHA, the Associate Administrator of GMHA, Chief Medical Examiner, Deputy Director of GBHWC, Director of GBHWC, and the Director of Public Health and Social Services. Is that correct, Senator? I wanna make sure. So, for all those positions then to be deleted related to health, there is an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, the amendment failed. So, Senator Limtiako, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, obviously, we have our priorities in the wrong place. And I know that we've already, through the implementation of the HEY and the classified and unclassified, rank and file, we've addressed that. But yet, when it comes right down to addressing it, we choose to bifurcate the issues. We choose to say that, that it, the leadership of these priorities that we always bring to mind when we're out there listening to our constituents, and we say, why is crime so prevalent? We choose to bifurcate the issue and say, oh, well, the, we're not gonna prioritize the leadership for public safety. Why is our hospital in shambles? Well, we're not gonna choose to make sure that the leadership of our health institutes, whether it's DPHSS or GMH, we pick and choose, just like what we pick and choose on which bills we wanna hear and how we go about hearing them. We pick and choose. Madam Speaker, I thank you for your time. I thank you for at least attempting to prioritize what everybody in this body always seems to talk about come election year, but when it comes down to it, chooses to pick and choose how they will apply, prioritizing education, public safety, and public health. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the main motion, Senator Upton, you're being nice.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I'll make this fairly brief. You know, when it came to this body, and obviously extends back to the 29th Guam Legislature, 29th as 105, making our law enforcement officers, uniformed officers, a priority, that's exactly why that legislation was passed. You also, Madam Speaker, as the Chair of Education, had passed or sponsored legislation in a previous legislature that contributed directly towards our teachers' pay. In conjunction with that, there was also another adjustment that was provided in terms of the nurses. Now, we have the HEY plan that would incorporate and bring them up to par, hopefully, on the national, national average. But this body has repeatedly stood up, regardless as to who the members are in this legislature, and has stood up for public safety, education, and healthcare. I've seen it time and time again, Madam Speaker, and I just wanted to make that statement. When I look at this legislation, I understand the concerns about giving some of this leadership, the compensation that was reviewed and recommended by the HEY group. But this legislation is about recognizing the GovGuam employees, classified and unclassified, and giving them that opportunity to get their pay adjustment through a process. Obviously, there's some disparity or some questionable pay slotting that still has to be resolved. But I view this as allowing the executive branch to be able to prioritize our GovGuam employees and take care of them first, then present this based on the funding availability and affordability of this component, and let's take care of the leadership. Because, Madam Speaker, with all due respect to everyone that sits in that position, because I understand to some limited degree what they have to go through, the challenges that they have to go through, because I did sit in one of their positions. And I was very fortunate to sit in a cabinet-level position. But, Madam Speaker, I'm endorsing this legislation specifically for that. Let us prioritize our public GovGuam employees, classified and unclassified, and then affordability and sustainability, let's entertain what was recommended by the HEY group in terms of performance-related compensation for the executive pay aspect at a later date. That's all. To me, that's what I'm looking at in terms of this legislation. We take care of our GovGuam employees, classified and unclassified, we come back and deal with the leadership shortly thereafter, because I do understand too, that eventually, this government has got to, based on availability of funds, take care of the leadership so that we can draw our best talents to lead this government, whether it be in an executive branch, agency, whether it be in executive seat, or whether it be as members of this body. We certainly need to create an environment where the best of our best are given that opportunity, and perhaps compensation would be a contributing factor to that. So, I just wanna relay that particular statement and thank really the, or recognize the Chief Executive for making this an issue today, because we gotta take care of our rank and file and our GovGuam employees. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the main motion, does anybody else like to speak? Senator Suniculus on the main motion.
You know, Madam Speaker, when this question of pay became an issue weeks ago, we had a lot of questions, and we really wanted to get an understanding of exactly how people's lives were gonna be affected. We wanted to get an understanding of whether or not there's going to be equitable treatment. We wanted to make sure that employees who dedicated their lives to public service in our classified, unclassified, rank and file, teachers, nurses, doctors, attorneys, school aides, we wanted to make sure that everybody was going to understand exactly how they're going to be impacted. We were not afforded the opportunity to understand that. We tried to pass a bill earlier, we passed a bill earlier that got vetoed, and we felt we weren't able to override it, that would have brought that information in, that would have allowed for the implementation of this plan to happen, and perhaps at a later date when funds were available, if those funds were in fact identified. All of that was pretty much rejected by the Governor, and he just moved forward and implemented his plan. And now, what we have, Madam Speaker, is a big mess. We have a big mess where this Valentine's Day gift, which was intended to lift morale and improve public service, has caused a great amount of distress and has hurt morale for some of our most valuable employees, our seasoned employees, our veterans, the ones who are seeing themselves getting slotted back in their steps. They feel like the years and years, eight years, five years, the years that they put in to earning those steps were all of a sudden just wiped away with this plan that was just forced onto our people. And now, this body is trying to figure out a way for us to put this humpty-dumpty back together again. And it's going to require us now to look at every single problem that has arisen as a result of this plan that was just forced on us, to look at every single issue now and figure out a resolution. This bill, Madam Speaker, is just the beginning of what I am absolutely sure of is going to be a long and arduous process for us to try and go back in and make things right. This bill, as the initial step of this body to try and make things right, halts the raises for the Directors, Deputy Directors, elected officials, those $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 raises, it halts that. It halts that so that the employees who are getting 40 cents, $10, $20, $35, so that that money isn't getting sucked away and can instead go to those employees who are so adversely affected. A lot of these employees don't know what to do. They wanna grieve, they wanna go to court, they're so upset. Every single intention of this plan that was rolled out has gone completely the opposite And now, we have a lot of people who are unhappy. And in our attempts to go in there now as a body and to try and put these pieces back together, we are already, this very night, going through so much to try and do that. Halting the raises for elected officials, that's the easy part. The Directors and the Deputy Directors gets more difficult. A lot of the statements that were made tonight about the value that they bring to this government is not irrefutable. They do, in fact, provide a very critical service to this government. What we're saying in Bill 278 is that with the limited resources we have available, we must make those resources available first to our rank and file employees. I agree with the retiring speaker. If we're going to be enhancing the attractiveness of these positions of raises for our Directors and Deputy Directors in the future, then by all means, let's explore that. But right now, when people are getting 40-cent checks, when people are getting $35 checks, when people feel like their years of service and dedication to this government are being insulted, we must now make every step, take every step, and make every effort to begin the process of remedying that. And this bill is that first step. And I believe that our Directors and Deputy Directors, the quality leaders that they are, understand the necessity of this step. Surely, I would not want to be a Director getting a $20,000 raise while my own employee is getting a 40-cent raise. I mean, can you imagine the organizational challenges that that creates, from morale to productivity, and all the way down the line? Those of us in here who have business experience understand that you cannot take all the resources at the top and expect the employees that move the organization to continue to be satisfied. You cannot do that and expect them to continue to perform at an optimum level. And you definitely cannot implement the plan that the Governor just implemented that has shattered morale and expect our government to actually improve and get better. We have now, with the implementation of the Governor's plan, entered a new era of us having to go in piece by piece and try and make things better. This first step has been a very difficult one so far tonight. There are going to be more, more steps we're going to need to take. We're going to need to be able to help employees streamline the process of getting their grievances resolved. We're going to need to be able to help employees understand that we value them, and how is that value going to be reflected in their compensation, while at the same time, taking into consideration the need for us to increase salaries at various levels throughout the government, but in a way that's going to bring satisfaction to the overall organization. These are the kinds of things, Madam Speaker, that proper planning and true collaboration from the government would have been able to resolve. Unfortunately, we are here today. And so, I rise in full support of Bill 278, because it is one of those steps that we need to take right now, the limited resources, in order to make sure that every single employee who is feeling very, very devastated right now will at least have more resources made available for them to be made whole. And doing that, doing these very, very difficult things, and putting these pieces together as challenging as it's going to be in the months ahead, is part of what we do, is part of how we earn our pay, is part of how we make sure that we're doing our jobs as leaders. And we should move away from the idea that this is yours or mine, this is what you're doing, or this is what we wanna do. Let's step back and truly assess it for the merits of what it's proposing. And in this bill, what we're saying is for the Directors, Deputy Directors, elected officials, certainly our $25,000 raise, those things, they gotta be put on hold for now, because all of the damage that we've done to all of our rank and file employees with the Governor's implementation of this plan needs to now be undone. And it's going to take a lot of work. I appreciate the sponsor and cosponsors of this bill for initiating that step, for us to begin that process of getting this work done. And there's gonna be a lot more work ahead, and I hope that as we move forward, tonight can be yet another learning experience for us as a body, that engaging in any type of political gamesmanship is not going to be of any service to our people. of any service to our people. It's not going to solve the fact that we need to find the resources to make this thing happen properly, it's not going to solve the fact that we have so many employees who are upset. And as much as there are those who complain about when the bill was introduced, being called into session, why didn't we do it this way or that way, I would very much appreciate it if as much energy that has gone into all of the different machinations of trying to turn this on its head can instead be energy committed to finding solutions. All of the complaints, all of the different avenues that have been taken here to try and turn it into something that it's not, all of that energy, Madam Speaker, can be put to good work for our people. And I ask my colleagues to support this first step and to take that energy, all of us, and commit it to finding further solutions for our employees who have been affected and to find further solutions for the funding that this is going to require, because that's the kind of work that we need to be doing for our people. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, so anybody else would like to speak on the main motion, there being none, I want to make sure, because I know you guys are not necessarily looking up here. So, Speaker then can lean into close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise, of course, to thank the body for its deliberations on Bill 268 and to try and
278.
I mean, I'm sorry, 278. And to try and ensure that the public understands what the intentions are in this bill. I think the intention is best known by its authors and its sponsors and not the interpretation of others. And as the sponsor, one of the sponsors of the bill, it's perfectly clear in my mind what my intention is. My intention is that when we have limited resources and there's not enough to make the rank-and-file whole, and we are shortchanging the rank-and-file, but we are rewarding the people at the top and giving them a full implementation of their pay adjustment, then I think things have turned on their head. And I want to right-side, put this thing back right-side up. And that is, as the retiring speaker said, devote the resources to the guys at the bottom who make the guys at the top look good, who enable the guys at the top to achieve. And the guys at the top, they're not wanting for the same things that the guys at the bottom. The guy making twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, the bus driver making seventeen thousand, and he's not going to get what is due to him because we want to give it to the director who's making eighty-eight thousand dollars. So we're taking the guy that's making twenty-five and seventeen, saying, we're going to hold off on your pay raise, on your pay adjustment, until we finish paying the guy making eighty-eight thousand dollars. I just think that's alibis, as they say. And so, all this bill does is that the resources devoted to those people at the top who are making enough to be able to wait until we get the guys at the bottom whole, then we can consider that increase and we put ourselves in that same groove. Then we can consider reinstating that. And all of the individuals here who argue so vehemently, time after time, that's saying, no, let's take care of the guys at the top first, let's let those guys at the bottom continue to wait, because that's the effect of all of the amendments that's been posted and proposed in here, is to ensure that the guys at the top get taken care of first, ignoring, I mean, they recognize it, oh, well, the guy at the bottom, you know, we love those guys too, but we love the guys at the top more so that we want to give them a hundred percent and keep the guys at the bottom, seventeen thousand dollar bus driver, you know, with five kids, sending them to school, having them buy two new shoes. He can survive on seventeen thousand a little longer, or he can survive on a twenty dollar paycheck increase, but the guy at the top, you know, making eighty-eight thousand, we need to give him a two hundred dollar a week paycheck increase because he can't make it and he won't work as hard. If he's not paying, giving that pay raise, he won't work as hard, or he's not going to be as effective because he's not getting, you know, that additional pay. What about the guy at the bottom? What about that guy? Don't you demotivate, demoralize him, value him so much less? Maybe because some of us hang around with the guys making eighty-eight thousand instead of hanging around with the guy making fifteen and seventeen. I know, I see those guys, I know they talk to me. And I want to take care of them first. And I think that's what this bill does. It doesn't negate the value of the guys at the top, but I think when the guy at the top is valued at eighty-eight thousand and the guy that makes him look good is valued at fifteen, then I think that, and we are going to make an adjustment so that we adjust their value, that when the adjustment for the value of the guy at fifteen, we're going to say, we're only going to give you fifty percent of the adjustment, but the guy at the top at eighty-eight thousand, we're going to give you a hundred percent of the adjustment. What, how does that make him feel? How does it make you feel? It doesn't make me feel good, it doesn't make me feel right, and therefore, Madam Speaker, that's what this bill aims to correct. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move that the bill be placed in the third reading file and that we vote for the bill without engrossment.
Objection.
Oh, okay.
We will have
We can stay here till eight-thirty.
Okay, so, and the motion then to send it to the third reading, you're right.
That's fine.
Yeah, just to send it down and then we're going to recess for having to have it engrossed.
Sure, let's recess for
Yes.
Madam Speaker?
No, let's not recess, let's just wait, Madam Speaker.
I object sending it down to the voting pile.
Okay, there's an objection.
You know, Madam Speaker, we have an opportunity to right a wrong, and we did not have a public hearing on this bill. Voting on this bill, Madam Speaker, is wrong.
Senator, you've spoken already and you're out of order, we're going to recess and get the members in here.
No, this is a new motion to send it down.
The legislature is back in session on the motion to send 278-32 to the third reading file, not any objections, there is an objection, so, all in favor of sending 278-32 to the third reading file, please raise your hand. Motion carries, it's now in the third reading file. Senator Reese Spisho, you want to get us down to the voting file? Okay, so now it's in third and we are in the voting file and everybody should have a copy of the engrossed bill. Third reading, yes. So then we have in front of you, Bill Number 278-32-CR, and it's the engrossed bill. So, can the clerks please read the title of the bill?
Bill Number 278-